Good evening, it's 5:02. Let's call the closed session to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Here.
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Mayor Protemlata?
Here.
Mayor Knight?
Here. Okay, are there any adjustments to the agenda, conflict of interest disclosures for the closed session? Mr. Pinkney, did you have something you wanted to say? Are we good to go?
The council is going to go into closed session. Item A is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 5495-6.92, one potential case. Item B, conference with legal counsel and discussion regarding resolution of workers' compensation claim pursuant to government code section 5495-6.95, Ghelen versus City of Beaumont. Case number is listed in the agenda. Agency claimed against is the City of Beaumont. And then, item C, personnel matters, evaluation of acting city manager pursuant to government code section 5495-7B, sorry.
Okay, so at 5:04, we will adjourn to closed session. Good evening. To a full house. I'm Brenda Knight. I'm the mayor of Beaumont. It's 6:30. And tonight, I want to thank you, we've got a lot of people here tonight. First thing we need to do is have a roll call vote. And I'm trying to, I'm hoping my voice is going to last tonight. If not, Mr. Laura's voice works too.
We're both hoping your voice works.
Do we have roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Here.
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Mayor Protemlata?
Here.
Mayor Knight?
Here. Are there any action or requests for absence? Any, no? Do we have pledge of allegiance and invocation? I'm sorry, we do have someone here for invocation. Mr. Taylor, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then we will have our invocation?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. I do believe, is it cow fire?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here tonight.
Lord, as we prepare for the city council meeting tonight, let's settle our hearts for just a moment in prayer. Lord, we ask for peace and wisdom to be present here tonight. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life. Thank you for the people that have stepped up to lead the city of Beaumont. Help us all to act with character and conviction. Help us to all listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to all speak with charity and restraint. Give everyone in the room a spirit of service. Remind us that we were all stewards of your authority. Lord, guide us in the ability to be the leaders your people need. Help us to seek the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the great respect your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of all that spend time here. Protect our military, our police, and our fire personnel. Give thanks to the Lord, for he is good. His love endures forever. Have a blessed Thanksgiving. Bless the meeting tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Okay, are there any, I'm going to move this a little bit, approval or conflict of interest disclosures here from anyone right now? Okay, announcements, et cetera? None? Okay, I'm going to make an adjustment to the agenda because there are so many people here tonight, and I am going to move 7A up. And because I believe a lot of you are here to speak on that item. And our city attorney, Mr. Pinkney, is going to report out of closed session. And then he's going to go to his report, item 7A, and then we will open up for public comments. Okay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As to the closed session, item A, the council met in closed session for conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 5495-6.92, one potential case. There was no reportable action taken. Item B, conference with legal counsel and discussion regarding resolution of workers' compensation claim pursuant to government code section 5495-6.95, Ghelen versus City of Beaumont. The case number is listed in the agenda. Agency claimed against City of Beaumont. That item was not addressed in closed session, and presumably the council is going to move that to the end of the meeting this evening. And the public is welcome to remain to make comment before we go into closed session and also for the report out on that item. And then, item C, personnel matters, evaluation of acting city manager pursuant to government code section 5495-7B. There was no reportable action taken on that item in closed session. Would you like me to, Madam Mayor, would you like me to address item 7A at this time?
Yes, sir. Yes, please do.
Okay. Item 7A is proposed initiative to limit the number of building permits issued per year and discussion regarding the initiative process. There was a member or members of the public that requested that this item be on the agenda this evening. And so what I intend to do is give you an overview of the process. I don't know if this city has had initiatives in the past. I am not going to weigh in, nor would it be appropriate for or against the matter, but basically just to give you what the process is and the background regarding the initiative power. The California Constitution, Article 2, Section 8 through 11, provides the basis for the powers of initiative and referenda in California. The statutory procedures for city initiatives are found in Elections Code Sections 9200 through 9226. The initiative power is applicable to all city legislative acts regardless of the form, not ministerial acts, but legislative acts. The initiative process begins with the filing with the city clerk of a notice of intent to circulate a petition together with the text of the proposed initiative. That's contained in Elections Code Section 9202. This recently occurred in the city of Beaumont on or about September 21 of 2015. Once that occurs, the city attorney must provide an impartial ballot title and summary, and that has already taken place. When we were sent a copy from the city clerk of the proposed, of the notice of intent to begin circulating a petition, we then had an obligation legally under the Elections Code to provide a impartial title and brief summary. And so we did that on October 9. The clerk is then required by law to provide the impartial ballot title and summary to the proponent, and that has already taken place. The proponent is required to publish the notice of intention along with the title and summary of the proposed initiative in a paper of general circulation. My understanding is that you do have papers of general circulation that service this community. And that's pursuant to Elections Code Section 9205. The proponent must provide proof of the publication, including a copy of the notice and title and the summary as published, along with a corresponding affidavit confirming that the publication took place to the city clerk within 10 days after the date of the publication. And that's Elections Code 9206. Now on to the issue of circulation of the petition. After publication occurs of the notice of intention to circulate the petition, the title and the summary, the proponents may then begin circulating the petition among registered voters of the city. It can only be signed by registered voters. The petition actually has to be designated so that each signer personally writes on the petition his or her name, signature, and residential address. The residential address requirement enables the election official that's going to review the petitions and the signatures later on to verify that the parties that sign it are properly registered at their residence and therefore eligible to sign the petition. Once signatures are collected, the petition and all sections have to be filed with the register of voters office. That has to occur 180 days after the proponents receive the title and summary from the city clerk. We've calculated that the deadline for return of the signed petitions is May 20 of 2016. In the materials in the packet, it said 2015. It should have said 2016.
It also says April, not May.
Well, it should say April. Did I say May?
Yeah.
Okay, I meant May 20, 2016. I apologize.
Do you mean April or May?
April, I'm sorry.
Okay, so everyone is April.
April 20, 2016, sorry.
Okay.
Signatures lacking the signer's full residential address may not be counted as valid. Now on to the issue of the council, potential council action on the proposed petition. If the petition qualifies, and what the register of voters does is they review the signatures and then they make sure that they have the sufficient number of signatures. And if they do, then a letter is sent from the register of voters office to the city and qualifying the petition for placement on the ballot. At that point, the city council must either adopt, they may adopt the ordinance, because what the petitioners are doing is proposing that an ordinance be adopted. You can actually adopt the ordinance without change, or you can submit the proposed ordinance to the voters. And that's covered by Elections Code Section 9214 through 9215. If the petition measure is procedurally in compliance with the law, the city has a duty to place the measure on the ballot if the council declines to adopt the initiative itself. Now, there are exceptions to that rule, but I'm not going to go into that because it's a detailed legal discussion that I don't think is necessary for this evening. The city council may request an impartial analysis. When directed by you, I would prepare an impartial analysis of the initiative. The analysis has to be limited to 500 words or less and must include a statement indicating whether the measure was placed on the ballot by a petition, signed by the requisite number of voters, or by the governing body, the council itself. And the analysis should explain the effect of the initiative on existing law and its operation, which would be the general plan here and the city code. And if I believe that the measure may be unlawful for any reason, the analysis may indicate that the initiative has potential legal problems. So it would not, I do not believe that it would be appropriate this evening for me to opine on the legality of the ordinance. I've reviewed it, but it's early in the process, and I don't think it would be appropriate for me to do that, and I just let you know that in advance, that I won't be offering an opinion on that. But you will have the opportunity later to ask me to review it if you so choose. The city council may also refer the petition for report by various city departments. During the circulation of the petition or before adopting it or placing it on the ballot, the council may refer the petition to various city agencies for their reports on the potential impacts, fiscal impacts, on the general and specific plan consistency, various land use issues, and any other matters. And that's covered by Elections Code Section 9212. And then in terms of the timing of the election, if the petition were to go forward, the signatures were to be verified by the register of voters and submitted to you, the timing of the election on the proposed initiative depends on the number of signatures on the petition. If the petition contains the signatures of at least 15% of the registered voters and expressly requests a special election, then the council is required to call a special election. The special election, however, has to be held not fewer than 88 or more than 103 days after the date of the order of elections. So it would be unlikely, possible but unlikely, that it would make it for the June election as a special election. If the petition contains the signatures of at least 10% of the registered voters, then the council must either adopt the ordinance without change itself or place the initiative on the ballot at the next regular election, held not fewer than 88 days after the date of the order of election. In terms of adoption of the initiative by the electorate, a majority vote is generally required to adopt an initiative. A couple of things that I wanted to point out. One of the options that the council will have is you could forego the collection of signatures altogether, and you may decide to initiate the process of voter consideration of measure on your own without a petition. So you could decide, and I think that was one of the questions that came up at the last council meeting, can we do that? You could decide to submit the matter to the voters and not go through the signature collection process. However, a city council initiated measure has to go through the SEQA analysis process. There's a specific exemption from SEQA for voter initiative measures, but if you were to vote to put it on the ballot, it's not categorically exempt from SEQA. And I won't go into all the SEQA issues that could come up because I don't think it's appropriate to do that at this time. Now, with respect to the initiative measure that has been submitted to the city, the initiative measure that's at issue seeks to amend the city's general plan to reflect and the city code to reflect that the maximum number of dwelling units which may be permitted annually in the city will be 350, of which 50 dwelling units will be reserved for single family, I'm sorry, single unit infill projects. According to the initiative measure, residential unit building permit applications must be received by January 31 of each year, and the number of development project dwelling unit permits per year shall be calculated as follows. 350 less the sum of dwelling unit building permits that are exempt from this chapter due to vested rights. In addition, the initiative measure provides that, and I'm quoting, residential dwelling units included in approved development agreements establishing vested rights to develop and other vested development projects are exempt from the initiative measure. So the proposed ordinance specifically excludes vested right properties. So it would not impact them, as I read it. Development agreements provide a form of vested rights, as you know, we covered this in prior council meetings, and that vested right supersedes any change in planning, zoning, subdivision, or building regulations adopted after execution of the development agreement. Unless otherwise stated in the development agreement, regulations governing permitted uses of land, density, design improvement, and construction standards and specifications applicable development of property subject to a development agreement are the regulations enforced at the time of execution of the development agreement. Okay, so let me see if I had anything else I wanted to cover. I think that's it. I think that's my report on the background and the process.
Mr. Pinkney, thank you very much.
Mayor, before we move forward-
Point of order here, yes, sir?
Could I get just, I have a couple of quick clarifications for what he has-
Mr. Pinkney?
Presented.
Okay.
The vote to, by council, if council puts the ballot, we have to go through the SEQA process, but that's only if we did it before the gathering of the signatures?
Yes. If you're initiating it rather than the voters, then you have to go through a SEQA analysis, yes.
Okay. And the way the ordinance is written, and again, I know you're not opining on it, but you did bring up the fact that it would exempt current development agreements, vested rights. Would this, if it were passed, would it govern the creation of future development agreements?
Well, future development agreements wouldn't be vested, and so they would be subject to the laws that are in place at the time that they're created. And if this were to pass and it was in existence at the time those development agreements were created, then it would be, it would be your law, and you would be subject to it when you enter into a negotiated development.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Laura, or Mayor Protemlora has a question also. Mr. Pinkney?
Vested rights. In the county, when we've dealt with projects, vested rights has come up, and direction that I've been given varies. Vested rights can depend on the amount of money that's been invested in a particular project. Sometimes they look at just the entitlement that's already been approved, or do you look at the developer agreement that's been entered into? So do you have a definition of what we would be looking at as far as vested rights go?
The, when I was speaking of vested rights in my comments this evening, I was talking specifically about the exemption that's in the proposed ordinance. And let me just see if I can find the wording of it here. Yes, and the wording of it is very specific, and it says residential dwelling units included in approved development agreements establishing vested rights to develop or other vested development projects are exempt from the initiative measure. So it speaks specifically to development agreements, and I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure exactly what they're talking about beyond that. It could be a variety of things, and you may hear from some folks tonight that believe that they have vested rights.
Right.
And we'd look at that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. Anyone else? Are we good? All right. At this point in time, we are going to move forward to the public comment period. However, do I have to, I have Mr. Dyson to speak for six minutes? Is that my understanding of this?
Well, Madam-
This is something new to us, you guys, so we're learning.
Madam Mayor, the reason this is on the agenda is because there were, there was, I believe it was Mr. Dyson and perhaps somebody else that requested that the item be placed on the agenda and they be given an opportunity to make, I believe, a PowerPoint presentation. And so that was their request, and my recollection is that the council was supportive of that. So they would be presenting it. We did it under the city attorney report because I wanted to give you the background and the legal framework for the initiative process because I wasn't sure how familiar you were with it or the community was. And I also wanted to clarify some of the exemptions that were specifically listed in the proposed ordinance.
Okay, thank you. So is Mr. Dyson or his counterpart here tonight?
... building with other desirable buildings such as new commercial and retail. What we came up with is this. Legal counsel was asked to name our Beaumont Balanced Growth Initiative and came up with the title Initiative Measure Controlling: The Number of Dwelling Unit Building Permits Issued Annually. I think this is a bit lengthy, but have to agree that it does accurately describe the ordinance's intent. What are the benefits of a balanced growth program? First, it allows time for the city's infrastructure to catch up with the population we already have. Infrastructure such as transportation, roads, schools, water, sewers, protective services. It lessens demands on our natural resources. And lastly, it returns control of growth to the hands of voters. What are we asking of city council tonight? One, to task staff to research the existing home builder contracts and vesting rights. Two, provide this information to the Balanced Growth Committee. Information such as builders, track maps, number of homes planned, and the timeframes involved. Third, place our initiative on the next upcoming meeting agenda for a vote to approve placing our measure onto the November 2016 general election ballot. What does this ballot measure propose? The initiative allows building of 350 new homes per year, with 50 of these being allocated for infill. This number is consistent with the average number of annual home starts since the year 2008. Beaumont voters will set this annual allocation instead of it being determined by developers. Building frenzies like those experienced in 2005, '06, and '07 will not occur again. This is a slide presented here two weeks ago as part of our city manager's report. It summarized the number of building permits for single-family housing starts over the past 11 years. The spreadsheet grid numbers are a little difficult to read, so I highlighted them in the left-hand column in red. As you can see, from 2008 up to present, the housing starts are very consistent with what we are proposing, 350 or less. The years 2005, '06, and '07 represent the building frenzy. The number is from 2,300, 1,850, and 1033. What impact will this balanced growth initiative have? As you can see from the previous slide, it will not cause economic stress to the city. It will not result in a loss of jobs. It will result in alternative land use like commercial and retail, and it will allow time to bring our public facilities, like our water treatment plant, streets, schools, and hospitals, up to par. Infrastructure impacts. Water. What can you say? Here is a brochure provided to Beaumont citizens from our local Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District. It is a graphic depicting the many tasks that we should no longer perform. As we all know, California is suffering its seventh year of drought. Making additional demands on this limited resource by building new homes at an uncontrolled rate can only make the situation worse. Schools. Here is a headline from a recent Press Enterprise feature article. It paints a grim picture on the educational dilemma Beaumont is heading toward. The article clearly spells out the impacts of adding thousands of new students into an already burdened system. Another infrastructure service of utmost importance is police and fire services. We do not have adequate fire emergency protection in our city today. Emergency response times for many parts of the city are over four minutes. The number of police officers on the street has been reduced. Property taxes paid by new homes built on annexed county land does not cover the cost of protective services. What are the BMG committee's next steps? If council chooses not to act on this issue, we will immediately launch a voter petition drive. We will gather signatures of the required 10% of Beaumont registered voters, and we will qualify this initiative to be placed on the 2016 general election ballot. Natural settings and abundant wildlife that most longtime Beaumont residents once knew. Lastly, what do we ask of council tonight? Please allow Beaumont citizens a chance to vote on this important issue. Please provide the requested information to the BBG committee. Do not yield to home builder pressures and scare tactics. Do not place personal political agendas ahead of the voter's right to speak. Please place our initiative onto the next meeting agenda. Lastly, what do we ask of council tonight?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much.
May I just weigh in on the request that's being made to put it on the next agenda? It would be, if the council is going to consider putting this on the ballot, we would need to do a SEQA review to determine whether there's any foreseeable environmental impact, so- So, you know, maybe 30 days from now if that's what the council's inclined to do versus the next meeting. Just a suggestion.
What does a CEQA review entail?
It involves having somebody that's qualified, an environmental consultant or environmental engineer, to evaluate foreseeable environmental impacts of the proposed ordinance. And I, you may have somebody on staff that's qualified to do that, I'm not.
What would be the cost of that?
It depends on-
It depends on if we did it in-house or outside. Rebecca's not here tonight, so I can't ask, I don't know that she's qualified, so I wouldn't have that answer tonight.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Pinkney? We're good. All right, we are going to move on to the public comment period. Now, prior to this, there are so many people here tonight. I'm requesting you to please be respectful, be respectful of your neighbors. And, you know, we want to hear everyone and their opinion and what they have to say. Chief Tulees is in the back, we've got Commander Fagan here, we have Sergeant Walter, and also Officer Devlin, and maybe a few more that I'm not aware of. But we will keep this meeting under control and respectful. And we appreciate you not blurting out from the audience, but expressing your opinion on your three minutes. And so, given that, this is a disclaimer I have to read. Any one person may address the City Council on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give it to the city clerk. There's a three-minute limit on public comments. And you guys, please, when you're, when the red light comes up, please stand down, basically. I will gavel you down, there's a lot of people here tonight. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. So, state law prohibits the council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. So, at 7 o'clock, I'm going to open up the public comment period and-
May I make a point of order, please?
Excuse me?
May I make a point of order, please?
A point of order? Would you like to make a point of order?
I would.
Yes.
This is an item that is on the agenda, not on the agenda. So, my understanding is that we can respond and that we're not prohibited by state law from responding.
You can, this is an agendized item, it's not during the initial three minutes, which covers items that aren't on the agenda.
Right.
So, you can, you can respond. But typically, in order not to interrupt people's comments, a good practice, it's up to you, is to allow people to make their comments and then come back.
No, and I'm not suggesting we don't, we shouldn't do any comments until all the public speaking is done. I'm just, the statement that she read said that it was not on the agenda and we couldn't respond.
Okay, well, I think that I would like to keep an orderly meeting and three minutes, and then we'll respond afterwards. If Mr. White would like to respond, then you can, please, or anyone else, so at this-
Can we also, sorry, point of order. Can we also limit council's discussion as well? I know we talked about that, can we just review the-
Review the ordinance for council discussion.
And at City Attorney Pinkney's direction, we do have a timer that we've implemented. Tonight happens to be the first meeting. But I do believe our ordinance limits council discussion to 30 minutes after public comments, if I remember correctly.
Right.
Right.
So, Ashley will start the 30-minute timer after all public comments have been heard and council starts their discussion.
Does that mean one council member can speak the whole 30 minutes, or can we put limits on it?
Well, you're not supposed, once you've spoken, you're not supposed to speak until other people have had an opportunity to speak.
Okay, are we good to go here? Mr. City Clerk, and hopefully all of you have got your requests in to speak. So, Mr. City Clerk, who are we starting with?
Madam Mayor, I just want clarification for those that are not speaking on 7A. Do you want them to go first? I have about six or seven general comments speakers.
We're on, I would like to go with 7A now, and then we'll go to the general comments.
And if I might suggest, Mr. Martinez, if you could read the name and then the backup person so that that person could be on deck, because we do have people in the next room, and that will give them time to come over and be ready so that we're not waiting.
Okay, did you catch that, all in the next room? We're going to be reading two names, and there will be one speaking and one on backup. Okay?
Okay, first speaker, Daniel Drazzi. Next to speak, Ron Roy.
Good evening, my name's Daniel Drazzi. I am a citizen of Beaumont. I moved out here about 10 and a half years ago from the LA area because I was hired by the home builder here in town. And I love living in Beaumont, and I feel if we put a restriction on the building permits issued, it would affect my job, which could cause me to lose income and have to move back out of town and lose my house. So, I love this town, Beaumont, since I've been here. I like to, I get my hair cut in town at the local business, Francisco here in the Little White Shack. I got my tires for my cars at Desert Eagle. Get my gas at the Arco, Mr. Patel's over here. So, I like the small-town feel here, and hopefully I don't have to leave town because of the building gets cut back and I lose income or my job. That is all.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, Mr.-
Ron Roy, to follow Todd Gibbons.
The three-minute, the three-minute, could you reset, please?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
There you go.
Appreciate it. Okay, we see these headlines. Beaumont Residents Alarmed By Rapid Growth And Traffic. Habitat Destruction And Water Demands That Go Along With It. Another headline, Basic Checks And Balances On The City's Accounting Are Missing. Opening The Door For Fraud And Embezzlement. These are the headlines our city is generating. Why? To answer this, we need to ask some basic stuff. How much will it bring in? How much will it cost? And can we pay for it? These are questions that have not been, as yet answered as Beaumont reels from its latest housing boom and bus cycle. How does a city get $600 million in unaccounted-for debt, or work hog millions, and reach potential insolvency? Here's how: By greenlighting thousands of houses more than the city had the capacity to handle. Borrowing and spending more than it could afford to service and maintain, and not ever creating the means to account for or to plan for this accelerated growth. That's what happened in Beaumont. So, how can we prevent this from happening again? Here's how: Pass a balanced growth initiative that will allow the city enough time to consider and plan. Enough time for the City Council to accurately plan for the necessary size and capacity to develop city services and capital improvements at a pace that is sustainable as each home comes online. The city is still figuring out how to pay for its public services, such as police, fire, administration, code enforcement, water treatment, schools, energy, et cetera. As the City Council navigates its way back to balancing the city budget and ultimately discovering the actual cost for services and capital improvement projects associated with growth, the Balanced Growth Initiative can serve as a vital tool that slows the rate of growth so that the council can finally develop policies that ensures that for each house that is built, the city is certain that it has the means to service and maintain the impacts from that house. Please note that your constituents are far too smart to be bamboozled into believing that the city's existing bond allocations will magically pay for all the new proposed growth. The prior council used that pitch, and we see where that got them. I suggest that from here on forward, each proposed house that is considered for a building permit should have a public budget sheet attached to it for the citizens to easily see. The sheet should show exactly how much and from where the public bond and tax revenue will be generated from each house. And so, that's not just about the cost, it's about the revenues. And this is a hidden cost in most, in our most recent housing epic. You know, we had this huge explosion of growth back in late 2008 and '09, which led to massive indictments, investigations, and regime change, and needs to be identified through a balanced approach as we move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Todd Gibbons, next speaker, Robert Marks.
Mr. Gibbons, how about Mr. Marks? Is that it?
Robert Marks. Next speaker, Sean Hale.
Are you Mr. Marks?
I am Mr. Marks, yes. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Robert Marks. I am a resident of Beaumont, Houstonia Lane, built by Party Homes. I am an employee of Party Homes. Working for the builder as a young guy, I'm 32-years-old, has allowed me to grow my career. I've gained some valuable job skills that I've kept here in Beaumont. And, you know, we've got several employees here that also have called Beaumont Home. And limiting growth, limiting our ability to do what we've done for the city of Beaumont, could greatly affect all of our lives. We have 10 sales agents and a handful of other construction workers, customer service, that live here and spend their dollars here, as one of our, Dan Drazzi was saying, here in the city of Beaumont. And I've relocated family here. I have another family member closing this Thursday that's also relocating from La Habra, calling Beaumont Home. I have plenty of friends that just can't seem to catch a break in this economy as millennials. We all know what has happened with student loan debt, finding housing affordability. Beaumont's one of those areas where we've been able to capture some of that, and it's a solution. You know, I've looked at other areas, I've looked in Redlands, I've looked, you know, in Riverside, I've looked in areas that I've wanted to see opportunity, and I ended up calling Beaumont Home. So, I think I'm not the only one there. I've got plenty of high school friends that, I graduated in Redlands East Valley, I'm a graduate of Redlands East Valley. I've got friends from Redlands, from Redlands East Valley, from San Gregonio, from Ucaipa, that now live, eat, work, sleep in the city of Beaumont. So, and they're able to do that because of home builders like Party Homes and the path that the city has taken by allowing our company to develop not just homes, but communities. The city of, I mean, the community of Sundance. I have a five-year-old girl and a brand-new baby that was born on the first. My wife walks in the parks, she meets other moms that go to Anahas Elementary. And again, I have plenty of friends of mine, same age, same bracket, in the same position. And like I said, not too many other cities you can find that in. So, we'd like to continue to offer that here in the city of Beaumont. And that's all I have to say for the day.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Marks. Okay, our next speakers.
Sean Hale, to follow Jerry Dolby.
Hi, my name is Sean Hale. I live here in Beaumont, and I am a foreman for a framing company that builds here in Beaumont. And I'm opposed to the limitation on the permits, just because it could affect my job and therefore it'd affect my possibility of keeping on living in Beaumont. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Jerry Dolby, I believe.
Okay, and he's followed by-
He's followed by William Nathal.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Jerry Dolby, sorry. I'm a longtime Beaumont resident. I also work for Party Homes. I went through the school district from middle school all the way through up until, I still live here to this day. My family, family depends on the growth in town, because that's how I feed my family and keep them, the house over their heads. I think that, that the growth, we need, we need the growth for everything that we do here in Beaumont. I spend all my money here in town. I just enjoy Beaumont. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker.
William, I apologize, I believe it's Nathal. New Hall, excuse me, New Hall?
Nathal.
Oh, that's the first name.
No problem.
To follow Jan Harriman.
What was your last name again? And we'll start your time over.
Nathal.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, thank you for holding this meeting. I am, like Sean, a resident of Beaumont. I'm also a contractor in Beaumont. I moved here 10 years ago this month, actually, because our company was doing so much work out here. Since then, I've been married, had kids. My kids are coming of age to where they can go to school. I've seen the community go from what I'm imagining others want to keep, their very small-town feel. But I think that through the development that has been happening, the small-town feel is maintained. But we do need the development. My family depends on the income, and my employees depend on the income. I, like other speakers, spend my dollars here. I support the local businesses. And we need the continued growth here to support the city and sustain the city's own development. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Jan Harriman, to follow Mike Sutton.
Hi, I'm Jan Harriman, and we own the commercial property at the corner of 8th Street and Highland Springs. It's not about development. We're not the enemy. The developer is not the enemy to Beaumont, and it's not the enemy to the people out here. It's opportunity. It's whether or not this city wants to move forward and give everybody an opportunity. Developers, people to buy homes, people to come and live in your neighborhoods, to be able to move out of big cities and come to a place that's safe. And in a, what, you're stepping back in time when you come out here, because the people can play in the street and come home before the lights are, before it gets dark. And it just seems like to, for you to agree to a referendum to stop growth doesn't make sense for anybody, not for the city, not for the people of Beaumont, and not for the developer. We're not the enemy. We come in here and we pay money to buy property and invest, and then we put more money in to build. And when we build, we hire the local people. We don't bring in somebody out of town to come in here and build to give jobs. But the last eight years, to point back to say that you've only given out 300 building permits in eight years, it's been eight years of a recession. So, how can you figure that? Because everybody pulled back. We were ready to start building, and we stopped because of the recession. So, it's just, you need to look at the whole picture and work out something to where, instead of looking at the developer as the bad guy and coming in here and trying to take money, maybe you should look at him as somebody that could come in here and help. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mike Sutton. And Sam Padalano to follow.
Honorable Mayor, honorable council members. My name is Mike Sutton. I'm a vice president of Michael Baker International. I've had the pleasure of working with Party Homes since about 1999 on various projects here in Beaumont. I particularly wanted to read for you today, for record, a letter from Mark Swanson, who's one of the multiple employees I have that lives in the past area here. Couldn't be here because he has a conflict tonight. Dear council members, I have been a resident of Beaumont since September 2008 and live in the Fairway Canyon community. My wife and I moved to Beaumont where affordable housing and opportunity for growth within and around the city existed. I have been actively involved in my community with the Fairway Canyons HOA since January 2009, and I am currently the HOA Board President. Additionally, I'm a registered civil engineer in the state of California, and I'm an engineer of record on several party residential projects within the city. Recent discussions through the city regarding current and future growth policies raise serious concerns to me and many of those who do business in the city. Should restrictions or moratorium be placed on development, the direct and indirect employment of hundreds of people would be greatly impacted. Currently, from the engineering side, the Sundance project utilizes the services of four Michael Baker offices consisting of approximately 50 employees. Several other professional services and skilled trades would be directly impacted should the city choose to implement any restricted growth. I strongly believe the city needs to increase its commercial and retail development through continuing its residential development. continuing its residential development. An increase in retail development is revenue for the city. As a resident, I dislike traveling to Redlands or Moreno Valley or cities beyond to purchase goods and services that are not available in the Beaumont area. If residents, if residential growth is allowed to continue, retail and commercial will eventually make its way to the city beyond what currently exists. In turn, the residents who reside here can shop within the city, ultimately generating more revenue the city so greatly needs. Lastly, as a resident and HOA Board Member of the Fairway Canyon, the economic downturn has done a good enough job in delaying the completion of our community. I sincerely hope the city does not compound the issue by imposing development restrictions. Development is beginning to return to the area, and that is a good thing. This goes for other communities in the city which are partially built out. I ask the City Council take into consideration the impacts from establishing limitations or a moratorium on current and future growth, and allow the city to grow and continue to thrive. Thank you, Mark Swanson.
Okay, thank you for both of your comments. Next, our next speaker.
Sam Padalano and Mrs. Jane Shirley to follow.
Good evening, Council. I live in Beaumont, 38594 Florence Avenue. I moved out here in 1989 and enjoyed a very small community, and put my kids in school and wanted to make a difference. So I actually became a part of the planning commission, and some of you might remember that. And during that time, we passed a lot, a lot of homes. And those homes, we, projects, were good projects. I know a lot of those projects are still in the pipeline. And this initiative of which I am supporting is not designed for the homes that were approved in 2005, 2006, when I was, when I was operating on Planning Commission. These, these homes are, this initiative is designed for the future, because we don't want to see, I moved here from Moreno Valley. I experienced the Moreno Valley experience of the, of 1983 to 88. That is not an experience any of us want to have here. And so my moving here and trying to get involved was to help keep that from happening in Beaumont. I love Beaumont. I've been here for 26 years. I don't plan on moving, and if I can keep it a nice place to live, that's my goal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next speaker.
Mrs. Jane Shirley, and Steve Melman to follow.
My name is Denise Shirley. I'm representing James A. Shirley Construction, which we are an underground utility company that is having the pleasure of working with Party Homes. What I have to say is, building brings in economic growth. This is one town in the area that is showing growth. We work all over the low desert and the high desert, and we employ 27 full-time employees, and some of them are from this area. Unlike some areas right now are becoming stagnant, you guys are starting to grow. And we want to come here, which you're in, still in our neighborhood, because we live in Yucca Valley. But the opportunity for growth brings in tax money. This infrastructure that y'all were speaking about, the, the, I'm sorry, the growth of the sewer plants, and the police, and the hospitals, and everything else, that comes from tax money. If you do not have work for people to do, and I know in this area there are people looking for jobs, and we open up our company to full-time employees all the time, but they go, we have to, even though we're from Yucca Valley and for Banning, we have to go to other areas to get work right now. You guys are just now starting to grow again. And I'm looking at, at this thing that y'all put out, and the population in 2005 was 19,105 people. You now have 42,481. You've more than doubled in size. So that's what your infrastructure problem is, but that comes with people coming in, buying homes, spending their money, paying their taxes, and therefore your real talents. And then we are here, and then, patroning all of your businesses. We, we buy stuff from D'Angelo's, Home Depot, Fuel, we buy a few, all of our fuel, we are here, we buy all of the project, product that we need, the jobs that we have won. To, to, we put it back in your community. And then we have to hire people when we are here. So the moratorium, I think, can be devastating. You, right now, you, at, in 2005, you averaged 191 permits for single-family homes. You're clear down to 39 now. How much lower can it get? And it takes a while for houses to be built and get these permits drawn up. So I think it would really hurt y'all's economy if you keep going forward with this moratorium. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Next speaker, Steve Melman, with Nicholas Reyes to follow.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The gentleman whose letter was read, Mark Swanson, lives in Fairway Canyon, and many of us are faced with this dilemma. The emergency response time for Fairway Canyon and many others around, around the western part of the, the community is nearly double the recommended standard of four minutes. Now, that extra four or five minutes may not mean a lot to some of you, but I can assure you, when you're lying on the floor having a heart attack, or if your house is burning to the ground, that five minutes is the difference between life and death. And that is part of the problem that we face in Beaumont. We do not have the infrastructure, we do not have the fire, police protection that we need to, to serve the needs of the people we have now, let alone unfettered growth, which could come back to what haunted us in 2007, 2008, 2009. We need to catch up. 350 homes, which is in this petition, is more than have been built every year in the last seven years. And the recession has been over for a long time. So we're not talking about a huge loss in jobs. But the bottom line is this, no matter what your opinion is about this, who should decide about what the city looks like in the future? I believe the voters and the citizens of Beaumont should decide, and that's why I encourage you to get this thing onto the ballot for the 2016 election. And lastly, I would point out, growth does not mean just homes. It can be shops, stores, offices, and other commercial development. So don't let people tell you that, you know, that only building homes is growing the community. That's not true. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, our next speaker.
Nicholas Reyes, with Patrick Emmanuel to follow.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Reyes. I'm a resident here in Beaumont. I've been working here since 2004 for Party Homes, for, I work for a construction company here in Beaumont. Been on construction, but Party Homes has employed me since 2004. I was able to flourish here with my family and purchased my first house, and it's just, if things slow down, I'd really be affected by the, by the economy and with these, with the limited permits. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Patrick Emmanuel, with Blake Harrison to follow.
Good evening. I'm opposed to the, limiting the number of permits that are going to be proposed on the initiative. I think, you know, the city of Beaumont, I've, I've worked for a developer, Party Homes, and when we came in here in the early 2000s and started this community, I think we had a great master plan in order to, you know, establish commercial centers, schools. We have rec facilities within the community, and we do a great job of planning communities and planning for the growth that's in there, along with the infrastructure it takes to build these projects. And I see statistics up here, you know, about, the, the schools are bad. I mean, we built two great schools within our community. Where did that money come from? It came from the development fees that we, you know, paid to the city and the school districts in order to build these facilities. So we do pay our part to do the, the building that we do in this community. It was talked about, growth will happen on commercial, you know, growth will just happen. Well, the growth is on the, a grocery store isn't going to come into the community if it doesn't have enough rooftops to support it. So if any new business wants to come into the community, they're going to look at how many homes are in the community, how many are supporting the current stores that are in this community. And if you don't allow future growth, those new stores aren't going to come into the community. So I don't agree with the statement that the growth is just going to happen on the commercial side without the residential growth. And, you know, Beaumont is one of these cities where the young families can get their American dream. We're able to, you know, put homes on the market out here where young families can afford to buy a home. We've heard from several of those today already that have purchased homes out in this area. And it would be greatly impact these young families if you limit the amount of growth that can happen. So I see my time's running up, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker, Blake Harrison, with Mark Parrish to follow.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, distinguished guests. My name's Blake Harrison. I'm a roofing contractor, Blake Roofing Incorporated. I'm the President. The development we're all talking about provides jobs. It takes about 40 subcontractors to build a home. You've got all the county people involved, the surveyors, the people that make all the parts in the factories to build the homes, the plumbing parts, the mirrors, the cement, the roof tiles. And Party Homes, they don't, don't build tracks, they build communities. They put parks in, they put schools in, they put the roads in. These folks are paying for all this stuff, and again, it's providing jobs for everybody. Like the past speaker was saying, if you have stores, you got to have people to live in the homes to go shop at the stores and put money in your folks' city. You have a great city here, and you are growing. Like some of the past comments, some of those low permits were doing, due because there were not, nobody was buying houses. We were in a recession. Now we're at, the economy's building. You guys have seen the unemployment rate is the lowest it's been in the last eight or nine years, which is a fact. So let's build some houses, let your developer keep building and providing jobs for all you folks. And thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker.
Mark Parrish, with Edwin Aguirre to follow.
Hello, my name is Mark Parrish. I started working in Beaumont about 12-years ago, driving in, commuting, spending a lot of money as gas was rising, and so I decided to move here. So about 10-years ago, I moved, I live right here in Pennsylvania. My daughter went to Chavez, San G, just recently graduated from Beaumont High, started UCR. I got to tell you, if I thought I had to go to Orange County, I would consider relocating, maybe downsizing. But at the same time, we like to be action-oriented. We've got solar on our house, we've, I put drip in this year, you know, try to do something. We watch the presidential debates, and first thing that people talk about is economy. Then you turn around and you find state and local governments kind of squash that. I did like what Blake said, it's not just the employees that you've heard from today, but the whole industry and the country. And we just hope you take that in consideration as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker, Edwin Aguirre, with Sean Blinget to follow.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Edwin Aguirre. I work for Party Homes, been working for Party Homes since early 2000. Just want to say that Party Homes is a great builder, and if this building stops, it would affect a lot of our families. You know, we promote Party Homes a lot. We also promote Beaumont. You know, Beaumont is a great place to live. We go out, we do broker's events, we've mentioned Beaumont every single time. We let people know that Beaumont is a great place to live. And it will affect all of my coworkers, myself, my team, and everyone if the building does not, if the building slows down. So please take in consideration that we build homes the way people wants to live, and we have been changing people's lives here in Beaumont. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker, Sean Blinget, with Mike Ballinger to follow.
Mayor and I, council members, staff, citizens of Beaumont, Sean Blinget, 1705 Lakeside. I'm here representing the Chamber of Commerce first, as a board member on the chamber. I was here last week, I heard the first initial rumblings of an idea for limited growth, and it concerned me. We have almost 400 members at the chamber. Their businesses depend on a certain amount of economic growth based on people here in the city of Beaumont, and we would be gravely concerned to see a moratorium put on that. I say that as a, a member of the chamber board. Now, I'll talk to you about it as a, just a regular citizen. Born and raised here, I have children and grandchildren here. My grandchildren represent the sixth generation of my family in Beaumont. Beaumont was a great place when there were 7,000 people. It's a great place now with 40,000 people. Some of those people live in those homes that were built in that frenzy that I heard about in 2006 and 2008. I don't think we need the big hand of government to be involved in telling us how many homes can be built. I believe the economy will dictate that for us. The invisible hand of the economy will say what's right. I'm not going to discount any of the concerns that the other people voiced and their reasons for bringing the initiative forward. I would have liked to have some more time to review it, and believe me, I will review it in its entirety to understand what concerns they have and how maybe those can be ameliorated in some other fashion than saying, we're going to put a moratorium on the number of houses to be built. I'd like to see those projections going out. There was some talk about infrastructure catching up. I don't know if they have a timeline or a sunset clause on when they think that might happen. If we're not limiting homes less than the 2008 numbers, I don't know how that really limits anything, so I don't understand what really maybe the end game of this initiative might be. And so I would urge all of you to give it a thorough review, an honest review, and take it for its own merits. And if you're behind it, you're behind it. But if you're not, you're not, and I for one am not. They say there were no costs involved. I would believe a special election that there would be costs involved in that. There may be lost jobs. People come to places, the economy works on competence. If word gets out that Beaumont's put in a moratorium on building, I would have to believe that people would pull back, that commercial building and those things that we might want to see come to Beaumont would stop. So again, from a personal perspective, and a longtime resident in Beaumont, I would urge you to let the economy dictate what building does and not to, not to put this on the initiative. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker, Mike Ballinger, with Michael Garrison to follow.
Hi, I'm Mike Ballinger. I had the joy of buying a Richmond-American home here in 2009. It's been great living here. We love living here in Beaumont, love living on Redwood Street. We have a great community in our little neighborhood, and I've enjoyed just becoming part of Beaumont with you. This initiative is an excellent step to help you, to help our city manage the growth, to help just bring a healthy growth to this city. The economy has been in the tank. We bought our house when the economy was in the tank, and fortunately, I guess, that kind of helped control the growth just because of our economy. Our economy's getting better. Growth is going to happen. Growth is going to happen in Beaumont. And to have our city trying to maintain a healthy growth without any restrictions or controls or guidelines, we need to have guidelines, we need to have controls. So this initiative will help our city begin to manage, begin to control, to bring a healthy pace, so to speak, on how we, we grow. And I hope that we consider it. I hope that our city embraces it, that we can have a healthy, well-paced growth in the future here in Beaumont. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker, Michael Garrison, with Michael Titus to follow.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. By way of introduction, my name is Michael Garrison, and I am the Director of Governmental Affairs for the Building and Industry Association. I am new to that organization. I'm coming to this organization by way of working for the State Assembly. What I will tell you is that- What I will tell you is that the state of California right now in and of itself is doing quite enough to stifle growth and stifle business. Last year, when I was working with the Assembly, over 2,000 pieces of legislation, I think 400 plus were regulation and stifling of growth. Local municipalities don't need to have an extra hand in assisting the state of California in driving people away from this state. I will also tell you that if you put a moratorium on growth and development, development's still going to happen. It's just going to happen beyond the borders. It's going to happen beyond the sphere of influence of this moratorium. And you will have the effects, you will have the effects of growth without any of the award, the rewards that you get with that growth. I would hate to see Beaumont miss out on all the benefits that new development brings. And you've heard from so many people thus far, they came up here and spoke to you about, hey, they live here, they work here, they spend their dollars here. That type of growth and development needs to continue. All the local economists and local researchers showing that in the next few years, there's going to be quite the exodus from Los Angeles County. And those people is younger people looking to start businesses, find jobs, young families, newlyweds that want to start. You want those types of people to find a home and start that job, start that business here within the city. I will make it personal. My brother owns a restaurant in Pasadena. Him and his business partner are getting squashed out of business right now by the state, by the county of Los Angeles, and now by the city of Pasadena. Okay? A very successful restaurant, and he's being squashed out, he has to lay people off. He's looking at a place to move into Riverside County because he wants to be able to open up a restaurant. If he sees a place like Beaumont that doesn't have the markets to support his restaurant, and if he doesn't see the growth there, he's not going to, he's not going to move. And he's just newly married, wants to have a kid, they're in their 30s. That's the people you want to bring into this, into your town, and I don't see how, saying the message of no growth, you're not going to, if there's no markets not there, someone like my brother isn't going to invest here. He's not going to move his young family here. And that's the people that you would want. With that being said, I look forward to working with you all in the near future. Like I said, I am new to the position. As many people have said here, the market will correct. As we've seen by the very slide that was shown, the market has self-corrected and it will, and it's amazing what an open market can do, what free market capitalism can do. Let's not help Sacramento in squashing our local economy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker, Michael Titus. Then we'll have to change tape after that.
Good evening, members of City Council. My name is Michael Titus. I'm an attorney at Jackson, DeMarco Titus and Peckinpah. I'm here to speak on behalf of Party Homes. Now, Party Homes has a development agreement to protect itself from this initiative. It won't affect us on those homes that we've already got entitled. So why are we here to oppose it? Because it's not good for the city. Party does have an interest here to make sure the city grows and is prosperous. And it does not feel, and it does not apply to this initiative. These initiatives have been done for a number of years. I'll tell you two impacts you see. First, this is an initiative which prohibits the growth of homes. So it still has to comply with Government Code Section 65913.1, which says that when you do development in the city, it has to serve all populations. You can't sort of inadvertently cause adverse effects of certain categories of homes. More importantly, the Evidence Code Section 669.5 shifts the burden to the city to prove that. Now, what does that mean practically? What it means practically is that you're going to get challenged, not by Party Homes, we're immune, but by everybody else. So it's going to be costly. Now, the city can order a report under the Elections Code to evaluate the fiscal analysis and everything else. It's costly. But what you're going to find, and this is the last point I want to make before my time is up, is that this, these initiatives, if they sometimes they pass, and sometimes they get challenged and don't pass. But when they do pass, you can look at ones like the SOAR initiative in Ventura County. And there are land use people who've done studies of these initiatives. Just a lot of press, people did it. If you look in Ventura County, the SOAR initiative passed. What was the impact? The impact was that only thing that happened there was no business and no residential development, and everybody went to Calabasas and Santa Barbara. So all the traffic went on the 101, all the pollution on the 101, but none of the benefits. I could go on further, and I'd be happy to answer questions later if you'd like, either tonight or at a future time. This isn't very well received by the business community, and you will find that you will suffer and your neighbors will benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. We're going to take a 10-minute recess to change a tape.
Ready? You can hear me? We're going to bring the meeting back to order at 7:50. I apologize for coughing, you guys. I'm going to have our mayor pro tem finish our meeting, and I'll try to finish with I was on vacation and I came back and something got me. So anyway, I think, please give Mr. Laura a rough time, so.
Oh, I will.
You will. So we're going to go forward from here and have our mayor pro tem take over the meeting here. Okay?
I apologize now.
Next speaker?
Okay, our next speaker is Victor Dominguez with Marco Hatchett to follow.
Good evening. Tonight's a very important issue, 7A as it is on the agenda. It's very important for multiple reasons. And as you can see by the turnout that we had here tonight, it definitely affects a lot of people. But lots of people here may not realize how we got here. A lot of people may not realize who's responsible for this initiative. We have the people who put the initiative together, who came up and gave a presentation. But we also got to understand why we're here and who's responsible for that. The one thing that we heard from the people supporting the initiative is scare tactics. Good old-fashioned scare tactics. Now, I'm going to talk from a different approach. I'm not going to quote numbers and stuff like that, that's for the intelligent people. I'm pretty blunt. But the scare tactics is what scares me the most. Because you're telling everybody, we don't have adequate fire, we don't have adequate police protection, we don't have this, we don't have that. So we got to use a moratorium. It's a scare tactic, is what it is. Call for what it is. Then we have behind the scenes. Beaumont is being investigated by the DA and the FBI, we all know that. The community elected by a landslide, three council members. So these council members are trying to get something in. Hey, let's do a moratorium with our largest voting bloc, which is SLARA. Because if you ask these people where they're from, majority of them tell you that they're residents in SLARA. So now, we're going to be held hostage by senior citizens for the entire community. But the good thing that, while SLARA is, they're limited in their capacity. Unlike SunLake's effect on banning, where SunLake has the control vote, we're not in the same category. SLARA, if everybody voted for SLARA, they don't control the vote. So next thing we have to understand is this. This initiative's not going to go away. So everybody here tonight that is proposing their opinions against this initiative, you have to pay attention. You have to come back because these people are not going to quit. They are relentless. The reason why they want it on the ballot is because they want, they want to circumvent this council. So you have to understand and not go away, because this is not going to go away. You're going to have to keep educated on it, and you have to keep coming back. But most importantly, you got to understand who's responsible for this. My personal opinion, Councilman Lloyd White is responsible for this. He works behind the scenes with these individuals many, many times. He works with Judy Bingham, who is ironically handing out her card, but she represents Beaumont as responsible for growth. He works with Libby, who's over here all over the place attacking, very paving the way for him. Well, guess what, Lloyd? The wool is pulled over people's eyes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Marco Hatchett, I believe. Please correct me if I am wrong, with Miguel Magriel to follow.
My name is Marco Hatchett. I bought a party home, 2007, for my retirement. And I traveled 200 miles for my job, just because I like to live in Beaumont. So I bought a house in Party Home, and I keep going. Then my wife and I decide to open a little restaurant in Beaumont. The little restaurant become a five-star restaurant in Beaumont. We have a lot of customers who come from all around the city of Beaumont, from Palm Springs, Indy, Raleigh. So Beaumont should be proud to have a Thai air cuisine and short time become a five-star restaurant. Now, we looking for a second home, in Party Home. We grow up. All that it happened because I bought a house in Party Home to retire. We didn't plan to open a restaurant, but it just happened. So now, we have customers lying out for two hours because we grow up so fast. Now we looking for a big building to open a bigger restaurant. So Beaumont should be proud to have a five-star restaurant. People coming from all over. Now we open, trying to open a bigger restaurant, trying to get a bigger house. All that will not be possible from Party Home. If I do not buy a house for my retirement in Party Home, Beaumont do not have a five-star restaurant. Yes, we need to grow. We need more houses. That way I can employ more people from here, and we pay more taxes. So it's all good. So please do not stop building more houses. If it wasn't for Party Home, I would not be here. The restaurant in Beaumont is a five-star, and we're not looking for a second house. So please let it grow and build more houses. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Marco.
Mr. Marco, can you identify your restaurant for us, please?
Thai Air Cuisine is in 721 Beaumont Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Miguel Mavriel, I believe, with Jose Angliano to follow. And then, third up would be Luis Gil.
Carrie, can you check across the house?
Miguel Mavriel, Jose Angliano, Luis Gil, to follow with Aurora Navejas. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Aurora Navejas and I work for BT Pipeline, which is a wet utility contractor. Has been working in the city of Beaumont for seven years, has a good relationship with the city, employs 25-plus employees. And we are opposed to this because it'll affect our families. Our company brings revenue to the city. When, these past seven years, we buy the material here, fuel, dining, and we're helping families get affordable housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Last speaker on this is Judy Bingham.
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. I am one of the founders of Beaumont Citizens for Responsible Growth. And the word is "responsible" growth. I have lived through the onslaught of developers in 2004, '05, '06, and my citizens group paid the price for speaking up against a corrupt city government. We became their target. We tried to stop all the unfettered growth. I spoke up against the developments. I have lived through exactly what is happening tonight. I noticed Brenda Knight totally forgot the public comments so you could pander to Party Homes and other developers. And Sean Balingit, what happened to the infrastructure? You don't know? The money was stolen by the corrupt city government that the Chamber of Commerce supported through past area families for good government for years. That's what happened to Beaumont. Now, we have a corrupt city and what's that going to do to people who want to move here? Fix it!
Thank you for your comments. No more speakers.
Mayor Pro Tem, if I might interrupt. We do have some written correspondence that we received and there are 16 of them. I don't know that you want me to read every written correspondence. And for the record, what I'd like to do is just read the names and whether or not they're in favor or opposition and then give the city clerk the hard copies to keep for historical purposes.
Okay. Thank you.
And forgive me if some of these people spoke tonight, but I'm just going to read the names. BT Pipeline is opposed. Woodside Homes opposed. Shelley Hessler opposed. I think she was a speaker. Patrick Burfee opposed. Randy Lean opposed. Bart Hollander with Rich Development is opposed. Russell Singer opposed. Dan Devlin opposed. This speaker was here. Benjamin Shlomi opposed. Jason Baker with Keegan &amp; Baker opposed. That person was here. Alona Nanda opposed with the Beaumont Group LLC. This speaker was here as well. Solomon Levy opposed. And Joseph Matronga, CPA of Matronga &amp; Company, is opposed. And as I stated before, these will all be added into the permanent record.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, we have three speakers that put the incorrect number on their card. They put 1 instead of 11 and they would like to speak at this time, if you allow such. Okay. Would you like to continue? All right, so we'll continue with the three more speakers. We'll start with Jeff Chambers and then John Hollowell to follow.
Hi, Jeff Chambers with Party Homes. I'm not here really to talk about Party Homes and the impact of this potential referendum on Party Homes. What I'm talking about is the community that Party Homes built. I'm a retail shopping center expert. I worked in the retail shopping center business for 25 years. You put a moratorium in your city, you will lose the potential for new retail businesses in this community. If you look back at the eight years and approximately 300 homes per year, that's 2,400 homes. That's not enough to warrant a small grocery-anchored shopping center coming to your city. I've heard from some of you council members about wanting to grow retail tax sales. Without new homes, new house tops, new residents, you're not getting any retail growth. We build communities. We're trying to provide the best communities for our citizens. In order to do that, we want to see retail growth. We want to see community growth. And we feel the only way to do that is to continue to develop the city in a proper mechanism. I've heard things up here that are not accurate. I would implore you to please research and get the facts. It's my understanding the city has no debt. Not $600 million in debt. CFD debt is not city debt. It's homeowner debt. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, you're correct.
No. There is no city debt, to the best of my understanding. Retail will run away from the city if you pass a moratorium. You will lose tenants that are in town. They only came here because of the projected growth. You turn it around, your city will fall backwards. It will not continue to go forwards. I've been a member of the ICSC, the trade organization for the shopping center industry, for almost 20 years. I've developed many shopping centers all over Southern California. I've worked with every tenant that's in your city and many more that aren't in your city that you would love to have in your city. They only come when the people are here to support them. Your median income has grown from $20,000 to over $60,000 per year. That attracted the businesses you have on the south side of the 10 freeway. Without that growth, they wouldn't be here. You put a limitation on growth, your quality of life is moving backwards. It's not moving forward and I think people are progressive and want a better life. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, John Hollowell, with Mike Taylor to follow.
Mayor Pro Tem, Council. Actually, I put down item 1 to speak on 1, not on 7.
Okay.
Okay. If you want me to talk on 1 now, I will, but...
Well, we'll get you back on 1. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike Taylor.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Mike Taylor with Party Homes. You know, my comments tonight are really vested more in what Mr. Chambers spoke about. Everyone knows we've been building homes here since the early 2000s in the city. Truly believe we're partners in building the community. Today, I spent hours, countless hours, walking the retail center over there and talking to business owners ranging from Home Depot to Walmart to Best Buy to Kohl's. Not one of them were alerted to this. This is something that you've got about a half a dozen people that continue to show up at every single council meeting and pressure this group. And certainly, they had a... They certainly had an interest in bringing to light accounting deficiencies, potential misappropriation of what money was being used for. Certainly, they have a right to question that. And I've stood up here before and talked about infrastructure phasing. The city right now lacks a permanent Public Works Director, lacks a permanent City Manager. Certainly, getting those positions in place and really understanding how to smartly phase in the infrastructure over time. How is it going to be funded? How is it going to be paid for? How is it going to work so that the city can smartly grow? But I also heard a lot of people up here talking about free enterprise, the economy driving the growth. I mean, you heard from a lot of people that are Party employees, but they're also citizens here. They're also... What we hear almost every council meeting is the same six or eight people that claim that they're the voice of the 40,000 residents. When I walk those streets, when I walk into those commercial buildings, those people can't imagine what it will be like here if you limit growth. They only open those businesses because they believed the city was going to grow and they need to continue that. I'm all for making sure that we work to phase in the infrastructure, to build the necessary stuff, the fire stations, the sewer plants, the water lines and all of that. I'm a big proponent of working with you and every other, the Water District and all those groups to phase that stuff in. We're all for it. But don't limit the growth. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I believe there's no other speakers. We have no other speakers. I'll close the public comments section at 8:10. Do we have any comments from council?
No, you go ahead.
I'm just short, right? I'm all for opening a dialogue on growth. I did it in early years, in 2000s. And I was not a big opponent of lot size and a place for Johnny to put his swing set. It was my old term. So, I'm really... I'm really willing to have dialogue, but I'm not willing to shut anybody out, that's for sure. I am concerned about the retail end of it. I think there's a lot of truth to that. I think all of us up here are vested in bringing retail tax dollars to Beaumont in different aspects, be it restaurant or big box. So, I think the dialogue should be open to that. The fire station thing is... The fire station thing and the time to get over to Fairway in that area is always... That's a big concern of mine because you guys know I'm a big proponent of public safety and we're the ones that brought two officers per 1,000. The economy just couldn't sustain that. That's the reason we went down below. Two officers for every... You know, when we said we had two officers for every 1,000 people, that was a lot of coverage. And with so much coverage, the PD realized that because of the growth didn't merit it, that they were able to, I believe, downsize a little bit on the police... But I don't think the police is what we're talking about when it comes to response on it. I think it's really we're talking about the fire. And I welcome Mike's input on helping... We need all the help we can to build a fire station. So, if you know any beggars out there, come forward. But, as far as dialogue goes, I'm willing to work with you guys. Pros and cons. Listen to both sides of the table. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other council members?
No, go for it.
Sure. Do you want to start a personal clock for me? It's at 27. I just wanted to start by saying I'm not hiding behind anything. I ran and one of my campaign promises was to bring a balanced-growth initiative to council for consideration. And if it did not pass by council, then allow the people to decide. Number, I had, you know, we had... This discussion that we had tonight is important and we need to have it. Unfortunately, as someone pointed out, the citizens were not made aware that we'd be discussing this. I understand that it was part of an initiative... I'm sorry, it was part of the attorney's report and that that only got out to Party Homes, who then made sure that we had a whole lot of developers and contractors. And I don't have anything against developers or contractors. That's what built the city. I understand that. But what I need for people to understand is that there are a lot of people out there who aren't business owners here, who are not contractors and don't benefit from the business, the building industry. And those people are all saying things similar to what you heard from the several non-industry people here today. So, we have to struggle with that. I also have to struggle with the issues of our finances. We have one industry in this town, just one, and that's the home building industry. And our town is broken. And Mr. Chambers said that we have no debt. That's not true. We are $10 million in the hole at a minimum. That's $10 million in our general fund. That's not anything I'm telling anyone. That's something that has been in audit after audit, state controllers report. So, there is debt in Beaumont. Is a managed growth or balanced growth or a moratorium or referendum, whatever you want to call it, is that the answer? I don't know. But there has to be a dialogue and a conversation. Someone commented that they only came here because of the growth. That everyone came here only because of the growth. I didn't come here because of the growth. I came here because I was able to get a larger home for more money than I can get in Redlands. I wanted to live in Redlands. And by the way, Redlands had Measure R that was passed 20 years ago. And there's a lot of people who want to live in Redlands because of what they have built there. And I'm just looking at what Beaumont is. I'm not interested in what it's going to be two years, three years, four years down the line. I'm interested in what it's going to be in 10 to 20 years. Because as an elected official, that's what I should be looking at, not what's going to happen at the next election or how I get reelected. What I need to look at is what we build here in Beaumont. I came here because there was a promise made to me that there would be businesses, that there would be retail, that there'd be movie theaters, restaurants, that there would be outdoor mall, that we wouldn't have to drive to Redlands, Moreno Valley, in the desert for everything that we needed to do. That's where I thought... That's what my vision of balanced growth was, was to slow down the development. Now, here's why I think it's important to consider slowing down the development. We do not have the funds for our services. We don't have them. We're $10 million in the whole general fund. It has been brought to our attention by our investment advisors that annexed property only generates 25% of the property tax to the city. When I asked them point-blank, "Does that mean that each home that we build here puts us further in the hole?" The answer was not even conditional. It was yes. Now, whether or not the 25%, I've had this conversation with Mr. Chambers and Mr. Taylor at Party Homes. Whether or not that 25% does cover the services or not, I'd like to see a study on that. I'd like to see the information on that. But my biggest concern, and I hope the council will listen to this, is that we had a good discussion, but it was all one-sided tonight. It was one-sided because the building industry is in a position to be able to pick up the phone, network and get all the people here to talk. And I think that's important here, your side. I'm not discounting that. But there are a lot of people out in the public who didn't know we would be discussing this tonight. It hadn't been in the newspapers. It was only... And actually, a lot of what I heard was misinformation coming from most of the emails we got. So, I would like to ask my council, co-council members, to consider... I mean, this is not something that we're passing or not passing. It's not our decision. It should be a decision that goes to the voters. And I'm asking that we at least have one more meeting... And I'm asking that we at least have one more meeting with it properly agendized, so that maybe the community, the citizens of Beaumont can come in and weigh in, and maybe they won't be here, maybe it'll just be the people that we saw tonight, and you can come back, more than welcome to come back. But I think this discussion needs to continue, and it doesn't matter what we do up here, it doesn't matter whether we put it on the ballot, or we don't put it on the ballot. They need to get 1,500 signatures in a town of 40,000, 13,000 registered voters. Can they do it? They've got six months to do it. I just think we need to have it up here again, so that we can get another way in from the community and the public who weren't aware that we were going to really go into this tonight. Thank you.
Let's go first.
There seem to be, for me, there's a lot of questions on, one of the important questions for me is what are vested rights, if we're going to need to get answered. And one of the questions I have, Mr. Peaton, is it? Would it be possible to have the city head up group that is put together of commercial developers, tract developers, business owners, residents? We've got representatives from the Park District perhaps, maybe from the water, San Diego Pass Water, to get in a room and maybe get some of these questions that are out there answered, to see what, you know, one of them, again, is vested. What is that, you know, if, if all the tracts, if we decide that it's tracts that are vested, then that, what is that world that's left? You know, how big is that world? You know, we've got other questions on, you know, how do we cover services? What is the impact of services? So just need to know, is that, is that possible to have a group like that, to be headed up by the city that brings people together to talk about this?
You can, you can gather information, you can share information with the community, so you can do something along the lines of what you're suggesting. You can request reports from within your city to be prepared regarding the potential fiscal impact and other impacts of the proposed ordinance. Where the line is drawn is that you can't engage in any, you cannot use public resources to engage in any type of campaign activity for or against a ballot measure. And, you know, the law is not crystal clear on when, and there's been Supreme Court decisions, US Supreme Court decisions on this issue, of, of when a city crosses the line and begins to advocate for or against a measure. And that can be done in the information gathering and sharing process, and, and I think, and I hate to use this, this terminology, but really, what the courts sort of look at is, does it look, feel, and sound like advocacy for or against a measure? So that's, that's the boundary that you have to operate in, in gathering and sharing information, is, for example, you gather information and then you produce glossy brochures that, you know, that advocate a result, that can be viewed as, as advocating impermissibly, in violation of the law. So, yes, to answer your question, you can gather information, you can have these meetings, but you just have to be mindful that you can't, that can't transition into advocacy for or against the measure.
Is it possible to have the city using, you know, citizen input and developer input, like I explained, to put together an ordinance that we can all maybe agree to?
Yes, you can do that. You're always free, as a council, to adopt an ordinance yourself that deals with the issue of growth.
So we could have the people from the Balanced Growth Initiative, developers and other people who interest weigh in, and possibly draft an ordinance that may be acceptable to everyone?
Sure, you can do that. You can do that. It is try to, you know, obviously, the proponents are free to pursue their rights under the election code if they, if they prefer to do that, but you're obviously, you know, free to adopt any ordinance as a council and gather whatever information you feel you need to make those type of decisions.
Maybe we can write direction to council.
Let me, let me just put one other comment on the record, and that is, if that effort results in the council putting an item on the ballot, if you gather information and you ultimately decide to put an item on the ballot, and there's a competing measure, and they're in conflict, so you've got two growth initiatives that end up before the voters, then what happens? If they're competing measures, and it would depend on the terminology and the language in the measures as to whether they're competing measures or not, but if they're competing measures, then the, the measure that gets the most number of votes is the prevailing measure, so.
But if, if we started this process and we included the folks who are involved in the Beaumont, the growth initiative at this point, they could at any time, if they're acceptable to what we are looking at, go ahead and just withdraw their, their...
Yes. They're, they're free to withdraw and stop the process at any time prior to submitting the signatures to the register of voters. Once they turn it over to the register of voters with the signatures, they have no control.
And, and in this process, would we be able, would it make sense or advisable, would we be able to do whatever sequel needs to be done?
Sure.
As for the legal opinion of the city?
Sure.
Get the numbers on the vested rights and, and also what each new home costs us in services?
Just like any other ordinance, you can get a legal opinion on the, on the, you know, shortcomings from a legal perspective, you can gather information from your staff, from the community, you can have a panel if you want, that addresses the issue of growth and, and, you know, work towards a compromise solution as council. So that is an option.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, I was going to allude to that as well. I mean, I think it's important that we, we make sure we include the school district, the, the hospital, the, you know, Mount San Jacinto College. I mean, they all had a, I think there are all the agencies that, that are a part of our community that all had a vested interest, you know, some, some agencies were going to do a bond in terms of the growth that they had seen, that they expect. And for us to make premature decisions now without taking all into the facts and, and required people to be a part of making this decision, I mean, I didn't see anybody here from the Water District, I didn't hear, I didn't see anybody from the School District here. I know this is a big issue with that, because there were some comments that were made saying, no, because there's a bigger, there's a bigger issue in terms of why school, you know, why our schools are lacking, why are our roads lacking? I mean, that's a bigger issue that I don't blame on growth, I blame it on past council members or, you know, administration here that, that took us in the wrong direction, but I'm not, I'm not here to discuss that, I'm talking about this here, what we need to do is, is, you know, as Councilman Laura had indicated, we bring these invested people into making these decisions, because there's a lot more facts that we need to discover. And this is the, just the tip of the iceberg, so.
Do we have any other count, comment from council?
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a comment. The ballot summary on the growth initiative was loaded to the transparency portal, for
anybody that would like to read it in detail. We did get two requests today, specifically for those, they are public record. One of the requests came via email, and I emailed the link in response to that person. The second request came in the form of a public records request. I let that particular individual know that it was on the transparency portal. They asked that we print it out, and we did charge them for those copies, and that happened to be party.
Thank you. Thank you.
One last comment that I wanted to make, and that is, you know, by raising the sequel issue, I'm not in any way intending to stifle or impair the process, but I just want to make sure that if the council's intending to take the proposed ordinance and put it on the ballot, that it does so correctly. And there hadn't been any type of internal analysis of the foreseeable environmental impacts, and my understanding is that your planning director's out for a week, so we just want to make sure that we do it right.
Can I make a suggestion for direction and see how everyone else thinks? I would like to see this come back in a future meeting and, and, you know, as we heard earlier that, or the holidays, vacation is not a really good time for this, but I'd like to see this come back in enough time for us to get some of the answers to some of the questions we've raised tonight, and bring it back to council for discussion, and we, you know, whether or not you want to put in, in our options, yeah, I guess you guys could weigh in on this, whether or not we just put it to the ballot. We can do that, I don't think it really matters, because I don't think it's going to slow down the, the group of what they're doing. But I really think that if we can get the word out a little bit more, I think it'll, it'll come out now, that we may get more public feedback from the, the non-building industry. And so I'm just suggesting that we think about bringing it back in a couple of meetings after we've had a chance to get some of this information we've asked about tonight.
Does council feel about that?
If possible, I'd also like to add, in that interim, if we can see if there's any interest from the, the folks that we have mentioned, in maybe putting together a committee to come up with an ordinance?
You mean like the School District?
The School District, Water District, developers, commercial, tract developers, citizens for...
The hospital?
Hospital.
College?
We can reach out to them, if you would, and then see if there's any traction there. Maybe you could report that back by a next meeting.
We could probably wait till the first meeting in January.
That'd be too early.
Too early?
The holidays, yeah, people are getting back. Maybe later in January.
So do we have a consensus, maybe, to bring it back then in the second meeting in January? From council?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yes, I'm good with that.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
So, just so we know the direction that council's giving us, would you, are you asking that we bring the, the proposed ordinance that the initiative proponents have put together as an action item, whether to place it on the ballot, or this, just the subject matter to discuss it and how you want to proceed? With the information?
Subject matter.
Okay.
You know how I feel, but I'm okay with subject matter.
Okay.
Okay.
Bring back subject matter, second meeting in January, please.
And maybe as an action item, whether or not we do try and move forward with an all, a city-sponsored ordinance.
Okay.
So will we make a motion to receive and file, or is that...
Well, you can make a motion to put that item on the agenda for the second meeting in January, and then we'll do that. If there's a motion and a second, a vote.
Sure, I move that we put it on the, put this issue on the second meeting in January, and with the option to move forward in a city-sponsored ordinance process.
I'll second.
Can I amend that?
We have to take action on the...
Yeah, if you have, if you have a motion on the floor, and there's a motion to amend, then we're going to, then we're going to have to have a, if, and if there's a second to your motion to amend, then we'll have to have a vote on the, your motion first.
Point of clarification, though, you had made, you had mentioned that that's going to be one of the options. So on the agenda item that was proposed, is that just going to be the only option? Or was there going to be another option as well?
As I understood the motion, it was to have an item on the second agenda in January for the city to consider the option of a, the council to consider the option for a city-sponsored ordinance.
Mr. Orozco, if you want to make a motion to add other options, I'll second that motion.
You were saying, I'm sorry, because I got was interrupted.
Okay, do you want to amend your motion?
No, I'm good with mine, I'm just saying, if he has other options, I might be willing to second whatever options he wants on.
So you were saying that...
The motion was to place an item on the second agenda in January for the council to consider options for a city-sponsored ordinance.
So that'll be an option, so it'll be like option one, option two? So it'll be an option?
Well, that's just the way it was worded, that, that you consider as an option to what's being proposed by this group, a city-sponsored ordinance, something that you develop.
Okay, so what I'm trying to clarify is that, that what's going to be on the agenda item is not going to, it's not, we're not voting on, for an ordinance, but it's one of the options for us to, to do so.
Yeah, my, I'm, just one person here, but my understanding of it was...
It's an option to go that direction.
Right, that you're going to have a discussion about whether you, as a council, are going to work with the community and these various groups to develop an ordinance yourselves. Was that, is that right?
I, I thought I missed, I think I misunderstood, because what was suggested by three council members was that, to bring the subject matter up, and one of the options was to put on there, if we decide to put that up, if we go that, go that direction, is to add the option of, of an ordinance, right? So that's, yeah, a city-sponsored ordinance, so that'll be a, a, and add-on to the bottom of the, of the agenda item, correct?
So are you, are you suggesting that there be, A, the option for the council to develop an ordinance on its own with input from these various groups that were identified, and B, another option to vote, to place?
No, no, no. What, I think that my option was, what I was thinking is, we have that discussion, and A, we have the opportunity at that same time to have that discussion if it goes to an ordinance.
Would you like me to clarify my motion?
Sure.
Okay, my motion was that back in, in the second meeting in January, we bring this back for discussion, with the option for council to decide to move towards creating our own ordinance. I'm not asking to vote on anything other than just direction, and I'm not asking to put anything on the ballot, I'm not asking for an ordinance to be created that we vote yes or no on. I'm just asking that at the second meeting in January, we have this discussion again, and then we decide whether or not the city wants to get involved in trying to come up with a, an agreement that all parties can partake in and agree to.
That, that motion was seconded. Do you have an amendment, or are you good with that?
Mayor, the mayor was going to say something.
I, I just wanted to ask something, and I'm hoping I'm not going to joke here. It seems to me that there's an awful lot of information in regards to this issue. It's huge, and if we, whatever we do, we need to do it correctly. And I think that it will take more than one, maybe we need to do an entire workshop, because this is, this is just not, there's so many people that want to weigh in on this, and I really think that we need to slow down a little bit and get all the information we need. Because I can't make a...
Educated.
A educated decision without all, everything. I don't want a portion, I want to hear from everyone. And so that's just my...
I think that's a wonderful idea, workshops.
Can I, can I clarify? I, I believe that if we end that meeting in the second week in January, decide that we do want to consider creating an ordinance, then we can talk about workshops. I am trying to slow it down, I'm not trying to, to get a workshop before, I mean, why do a workshop if we decide that, you know, we're not even interested in going that direction? So I'm, I'm not at all trying to rush this through, I would think a workshop may make sense, but not until we know that there's consensus on council to move forward towards an ordinance.
Well, I, I can't move forward towards an ordinance without the information that I need to move forward that way.
That's what I'm hoping they'll bring back in the second week in January.
Can we just call it a workshop? Because that's what you're kind of describing, is everybody comes to get...
You can call it whatever you want.
Let's call it workshop.
Okay, let's call it workshop.
Okay, so there was a motion that in the, the second meeting in January, to bring back this item with discussion and to receive direction, for staff to receive direction from the council on whether... from the council on whether the council wants to place an ordinance, a growth ordinance on, on the agenda, and that'll be, we'll call it a workshop.
Are we in agreement?
We have a first. I think it's modified the motion, so I think we have a first.
I'll second that.
So original by White, second by Latta. We'll take roll call?
No, we've modified it, right? I want to just make sure we've modified it.
Dan doesn't come back.
I'm not misunderstanding it.
Want me to reread it?
Yes.
Do you want me to read it? Okay, so on the second meeting in January, there would be a workshop where we would bring back this item, the growth discussion, and at that time, we would, staff would receive direction from council on whether the council wants to place an ordinance on the agenda, a growth ordinance on the agenda.
That's correct.
So the motion by Swy White and second by Latta. Are we ready for roll call? Okay, let's, council member Fox?
Yes.
Council member White?
Yes.
Council member Roscoe?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Latta?
Hi.
Mayor Knight?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Just as, you know, we took things out of order, and what we didn't get to first, on every agenda, you're required to have a public comment period for individuals that want to comment on things that aren't on the agenda, and we haven't had that yet, so you need to, you need to have that. I do have one other item I want to report on under the city attorney report, but I'll wait till we get that, get to that item in the regular agenda.
Okay, then we'd like to open public comment at 8:40.
Our first speaker is John Hollowell.
A little lighter subject. Earlier this month, I didn't get any notices about a BCAT meeting, and I double-checked. Well, I don't think we're going to meet this month. Someone decided we're not going to have any BCAT meetings anymore. And the public was not told that we're not going to have any BCAT meetings anymore. The BCAT meeting process started, I understand it was about five years ago. It was at the urgence of council to try and get transparency. This council, at least two of you on the diocese almost every week, that you have a meeting, you talk about transparency. If you don't meet with the people and have the public's input through a mechanism such as the BCAT group, of which council members used to periodically attend. I think since David Costello got off of the council, there has been very little council participation, and that was designed for the council to hear some of the comments from the people. So if it has been decided that BCAT is not going to meet anymore, please tell us, so we can officially take it off of our agenda. If it's going to be on the agenda, take and tell us when you're going to meet, so we can give input. It wasn't just myself, it was other residents of the community, it was homeowners association representatives, it was some business people, as well as occasionally a council meeting, or the city manager, or others that wanted to take and talk about things in the city. You do have an online mechanism of trying to take and get information to the city staff, but it's nice to hear the city staff sometimes tell us why they weren't able to do it, other than a little note of saying it's being worked on. And you wait for several months and nothing happens. I've got at least two issues that are out there that have been on the agenda to be, have some response, and the last thing I saw was something, it was sending it to someone else in the city to take and work on it, and they can't work on it because it goes to the city engineer. And then I'm told the city engineer hasn't had a chance to review them. So I think that if you're going to do away with the BCAT, tell us officially, so we know that that's no longer available as an avenue to try and get to the council. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker, is it David Werner? Weiner, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton and council members. I've been following the saga unfold here in the city over the past 12 months, and I must say that once I got over the initial shock of it all, very pleased to see that you've taken the leadership role to move swiftly to get a handle on all of the unknowns so the city can get back on its feet as soon as possible. I want to thank you all for streaming these council meetings live on YouTube, as it allows me to stay in touch when I'm working late and not able to attend, which ends up being most of the time. I recently saw a call from staff and others to get more involved and engaged in the future of the city, that's why I came out tonight. I want to let you know that myself and many others like me are concerned, we're watching, and we'd like to have all our voices heard in this process. We were concerned when the controversy broke, but you've shown us that you can work fast and get to the bottom of the issue, and everyone's pleased to see that. We are concerned that you will continue to allow the highest levels of transparency, even when it is painful. We all need to be kept informed. We are concerned that you make sure the city does not come to a screeching halt and fall flat on its face. We are concerned that the city will continue to grow and fulfill the future promise that we saw in the city and its schools when all of our friends moved here. We are concerned that vocal voices of a few does not dominate the conversation or agenda of this council. I know that you have had a difficult six months, but it is important for you to hear that many of us are pleased to see that you're getting in the trenches and are righting the ship. We want to hear that you are doing a good job and would like to give you the confidence to do more. We want you to hear that we want the city to grow and bring the shops and dining establishments that we were promised but that are missing. In a previous meeting, you had a discussion about sales tax leakage. I can tell you firsthand that it is happening. But if there was a balanced growth plan for businesses, shops, and restaurants, the majority of us would stay local, maybe even end up working local. We're getting tired of that commute. We want you to verbalize to all of us your immediate and future vision and plan for the city. While it's important and imperative for you to keep our house in order, it doesn't mean that you have to miss out on all the current opportunities for responsible growth. We see what is happening in the cities all around us, and we do not want to continue to be passed over. And no, I am not speaking about implementing some arbitrary halting of building, which was discussed at length earlier. You have moved swiftly and responsibly so far, and we appreciate it. You can continue further with our support. Don't miss out on this economic cycle. A lot of homeowners who purchased in 2006 to 2009 are hoping to get back to even or maybe see a little upside in their home value. This will not happen if the city gets to be known as the city of can't-do rather than can-do. We will stay engaged to support you so you can do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker, Judy Bingham.
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. I noticed that most of the people supporting the developers have left because they don't really care. They just want the government subsidies handed out by council. Now it's time to get down to business, and it's quite late. We need a report about what happened in the special meeting. Nothing has been disclosed and no podcast is up on the website. I was wondering, did anyone even record the first part of that special session? I'd like to point out that I have here a paper from Thursday, October 17th, 2013, written by Craig Schultz, who is here tonight. It says, "Audit Okayed at Ruckus Meeting." And I'll read this part. Councilwoman Brenda Knight said the city's books have been scrutinized by various agencies at least a half dozen times since 2005, and none of the probes have found cause for further investigation. If you really seriously look at this, it says something about the higher standards of bookkeeping in the city, Knight said. Ha ha. There needs to be an understanding that our city is held to a higher standard just because we've been investigated so many times. Isn't that true, Brenda? And then we have one here, also written by Craig Schultz, Friday, October 18th, 2013, "City Fiscal Report Sought." Beaumont got a letter from the state comptroller claiming it hasn't filed its financial papers. And we have our good friend and former manager, Alan Kapanikas, saying, "We are trying to get to the bottom of this. We thought we were all right before this, and it's the first we've heard of it," Kapanikas wrote in an email in October. And then we have, on Monday, May 25th, Beaumont mayor, that's you, Brenda Knight, says the city is on an upward climb, also written by Craig Schultz. Mayor Brenda Knight credited stability as a key to the city's success when she spoke at the 21st Annual State of the City Luncheon on Thursday. She praised longtime city manager, Alan Kapanikas, and said, "Having the same person in charge is one reason the city is, has not suffered as some of its neighbors have. I cannot tell you what a difference it makes when you have a city manager."
Thank you for your comments.
"That's been here for 20 years," she said after the talk.
Ms. Bingham.
"And then she goes into the budget."
Next speaker, Victor Dominguez.
With the biggest plague that we've been having to deal with today, other than the fact that the Beaumont finances are disarrayed, there's no question about that. But what we have is, we have an exploiter. Judy Bingham and her group, and Lloyd White and Libby, are nothing more than professional exploiters. But first of all, everybody in that group on item 7A wasn't all working for party homes. I don't agree with the moratorium, I don't work for party homes. When the discussion came up with the warehouses up there at the, at the high school, everybody was against the warehouses. It's fine, warehouses are no good. So now we want to build development, build retail, build houses, and then again, you had the same clowns, Lloyd White, Judy Bingham, Libby, and others, doing the same thing. No, 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 no. Well, which one is it? Which one is it, Lloyd? Warehouses, homes, development, which one is it? Or you just sell out to the special interests group to promote their agenda? Because their agenda is what you're promoting. And like you said, you're right, you campaigned on it. Good for you. Now the public understands your campaign promises. Second, going back to the queen of extortion, we should put her on the Megan's List of extortions, because if the city does a mistake, she'll just sit there and hang your tonies out there all day long and tell who they are. That's all she has. That's all she has, is a scare and a fear tactic to put into the citizens to recruit members like Lloyd White to propel her agenda on a constant basis. This woman does not give up.
That's right.
She will sit there and promote and promote and promote lies and fear and scare tactics and try to dupe more of you, like Lloyd White, into following her path. She's constantly trying to dupe the good citizens of Beaumont. She, she, she gets senior citizens, and as soon as they pay attention to her, she hooks and reels them in. Why? Because she exploits the past. Now, I of all people don't have no friends with past city government. Can't stand them. You guys all know that. But I can't stand even more is the people in this community that knew what was going on and did nothing about it. I can't stand them anymore, because as far as I'm concerned, that's, that's, that's worse than the people doing it. But the times of Judy Bingham and Lloyd White, Libby, and everybody else extorting, scaring, and fearing this community is over. Do not be fooled by her. Don't give her that satisfaction. She's like a little kid that cries and wants a sucker. If I had a sucker right now, I'd give it to her, but I'm out of suckers. Don't be like Lloyd White, a big sucker.
Thank you for your comments.
No more speakers.
We have no more speakers?
No.
I'll close public comment at 8:53. We'll move on to item number two, council reports. Start with Mr. Fox.
Nothing to report on, Mayor.
Mr. Roscoe?
Nothing, at this time.
Mr. White?
No, thank you.
And I have nothing to report at this time. But I'll move us on to item number three, the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mayor Proton.
Ms. Carroll.
Thank you, council members. I'll keep it brief. We've had a lot of speaking tonight, you don't need a long report. The Standing Financial Committee, though, I think probably it's good to get an update on that. We did have eight residents who had applied and one business owner. I suspect we've gotten some additional ones since then, do we? Yeah. So, so we're getting good response. I actually have heard from a couple of individuals who are still planning on turning in their paperwork. The initial date for closing that was the 5th. We informally moved it to the 20th. If we moved the applications to the 20th, then we would be able to potentially at the, on December 1st, have the candidates, all of them, gathered for the council meeting. Now, my only concern with that is that we would need to give these individuals enough notice that they could come to the council meeting and speak and maybe answer questions, and I don't know if that gives us enough time to give them notice and to get them in here.
Yes, that's a week and a half before.
So you think we're okay with that one? All right. So I think we're going to get a good response to that. So I'm looking forward to getting the last of those applications in. I did meet with the finance director with our new auditors, Van Lant and Fan Canal, VLF, and they're doing their kickoff meeting, or they had it, actually, they conferenced in on that particular one, and they're going to begin the process, and that will be handled by the finance director, and I'm perfectly involved just to at least watch how it's moving along. Because my only concern about that is that we're starting late, which we knew we would, and that means that we won't have the report as early as we would like from VLF. And there's two issues with that that I'm trying to avoid from impacting the city in a negative way. One is, we need the report in as soon as possible, because we'll get the draft, and you'll need time to look at it, ask questions, discuss it, and then we'll have to go to final. But also, we've had a history of that report coming in a little bit late, and we have tried really to move it up, and we don't want it to be perceived as negative if by some chance it goes beyond. And we know that we're going to go beyond January, but we were hoping for February for the report. So I'm still holding on to February for the time being, and I'll let you know if that looks like it's going to slip beyond February. But we're really trying to hold VLF to the February commitment that they made to us verbally. The warrants, I went over the warrants, and I went over some of the questions. If there's any outstanding questions that still have not been answered, you could let me know, and I'll do my, do we have any warrant questions? Okay. Then that's it. That is my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carroll. That brings up item number four, and we have action items. We'll go to 4A, Planning Commission Appointment. Have any recommendations from council, or do we have a?
I was just going to add one thing, other than what's in the staff report. We did receive Mr. Ririck's application. There was some confusion last week on the part of staff with the Standing Financial Committee extension and the Planning Commission extension, so that we did have an application come in today for Mr. Benneke. He was told by staff that the application deadline had been extended, however, that was incorrectly. was incorrectly stated to him. So I do have Mr. Benneke's application with me that I just received this afternoon.
Is he here tonight?
Yes. He's here.
I've been through it all. I'm still here.
Can I mention, I also talked to the city manager, acting city manager, today about that application process, and she had indicated that too as well. But I also heard people in the community that, you know, they thought the extension, it was an extension there available. So I don't know if we will get more applicants in, or... I know one of the options is to direct staff to continue this, you know, so...
There's two recommendations. One is to appoint somebody tonight or go out to publication and take more applications.
I'm sorry?
It's okay.
If we have two applicants here who put their applications in time within the extended time, I'd like to hear from them. And then if we aren't comfortable...
Mr. Ririck here tonight?
If we aren't comfortable with selecting one, then we can decide whether or not to extend it at that point.
It's entirely up to council.
What do you guys think?
Do you want them to go through that process now and then...
I say we listen.
And do that process again?
No.
That's what you're saying.
That's...okay. I'll clarify. What I'm saying is there are two people who applied within the time limit who are both here with applications. I'd like to hear from them. And if we are comfortable with selecting one, I think we should. If we're not comfortable in selecting one, then we put it back out and extend the deadline.
Okay. And then you go through that...
I would think if we're not, I would, okay, I would think if we're not comfortable with them, they probably aren't going to come back again. That's my opinion, but I could be wrong.
Can I get one point of clarification? Councilmember White indicates that both applicants or applications were received within the proper timeframe. Is that correct?
Well, Mr. Benneke was misinformed, so I don't, I can't say that he missed the deadline because he wasn't given the accurate information.
The deadline has expired at this point, Corey.
Correct.
Okay. I think we should hear from both of the candidates.
Mr. Rusko, you have a comment?
No, I just, there are some other people that were misinformed about the deadline. So I can imagine some other people that would be interested and not have that opportunity. So this is my concern. I don't see if we wait another... One of the questions I did ask the acting city manager was, when is, one, when is the next commission meeting? And then, two, if we were to wait another week before, or the next council meeting, would we be able to appoint someone at that time and still make it for the next Planning Commission meeting? And she indicated to me that it was sufficient time still, so...
The next Planning Commission meeting is December 8th, correct, Kyle? And then another point of clarification, the advertisement that we did do in the newspaper did state that it would be heard tonight at the November 17th meeting. I don't know if that helps or not.
Do we have a...
We have a couple of really good applicants here. They really do, and it's been out there for a while.
Do we have consensus to hear both applicants this evening from the council?
Yes, from me?
From me, yes.
Okay. We'll go ahead and hear from both applicants then.
Do we have a copy of Mr. Benneke's? Is it on here?
I actually only have one copy, but I can ask staff. Eric, can you make me copies?
Oh, why don't we take a short recess to change the disc, and that'll allow type of copies to be made?
You can, it's up to you. I usually...
So we have motion and second?
May we have some discussion on this?
Sure.
Okay. When was the original date that was published in the newspaper?
The deadline?
Yeah, the first deadline.
I don't remember. I'll be honest with you, I don't know.
Okay. So it's been extended a couple times?
It was never extended.
Oh, it never was extended?
No.
Okay.
The Standing Financial Committee was extended, and staff got the two application processes mixed up.
Okay. I think that we have two people who have qualifications to be Planning Commission. I've read Mr. Ririck's. I know Mr. Benneke's served on the Planning Commission. I think we have, you know, people who have followed the process, and I think it'd be important that we take option A and appoint someone tonight. I know, I've known Mr. Ririck for six or seven years. His son and my son are Cub Scouts, have grown up from first grade, and I'm putting that all out there because I...
Call for the question. Is this discussion, or is this a statement?
I call for the question, because, oh, sorry. Mayor, what, Tim? Is it, I'll call for the question. Is it discussion, or is it comments?
Mr. White had a comment. Councilmember White had a comment?
I thought it was discussion.
What's the difference between a discussion and a comment?
Because you're making comments.
I'm waiting.
I just want to make, I would like to have the discussion, not comments, because I didn't realize.
Your second was a comment.
My second was my explanation on why I'm doing that.
And I'd like, we didn't, we...
So let's take the vote. So we have...
We do, we do have two. We need to have a second on the call for the question, I believe.
Yeah, because the motion is to essentially stop debate and vote on the item, and so you need a second to stop debate on the item.
Okay.
And apparently you have speakers on this item. So you should hear them before you vote on it.
Okay. So we go...
You need to make sure that you hear from the speakers, and then you can, if there's a second to the motion to end debate and call the question, then you can...
So go ahead and do the public...
But you should let the public weigh in before you end debate and vote on the item.
May I ask a question, point of order? Before any discussion came up, either by the public or by the council, we had a motion and a second, and now a call for a question. And I haven't, wasn't even given the opportunity to weigh in with discussion.
You can have a motion and a second, and then debate the item.
That's what I, that's what I thought.
You can do that.
I'm going to call for the question, so now I'm asking for a second.
And then at some point, if, let's say, the debate went on for 30 minutes, and somebody wanted to end the debate and vote on the matter, they can do that. They can do that anytime during the debate. And there would have to be a motion and a second, and then a vote to end debate and have a vote. But in this case, we haven't heard from the public, and they have a right to weigh in on it before you vote and debate.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment, and then we'll come back, address the call for question, see if we get a second on that.
Sounds good.
I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment at 9:16.
Our first speaker is Judy Bingham.
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. All development begins in the Planning Commission. Beaumont has grown from 10,000 to 40,000 in the last decade, decade, but never built the infrastructure. The Planning Commission has always been nothing more than a training ground for corrupt politicians. If a person proves they were corrupt on the Planning Commission, they were assured a spot on the city council. Isn't that correct, Brenda Knight? All the developers here tonight, and wanting to get more bond debt, might be interested in reading the state treasurer, John Chang's, new website that he unveiled, debtwatch.treasurer.ca.gov, which makes it easier for taxpayers to track proposed and issued debt, cost of issuance, and bond, and tax collection results. And Beaumont is its poster child. I would hope that Jason Ririck and Mr. Benneke, to whom I am opposed because he's been there so long, and he has proven himself to be one of the good old boys, would have the courage and conscience to do what's right for the citizens of Beaumont. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker, Victor Dominguez.
Talking to the applicant over here, he's definitely a genuine young man, and he deploys in two weeks. And he's put his application in four weeks ago, and obviously, I mean, I like the dude, he's cool. But in all fairness, you know, this is, we live in an entire community, and there has been... been some miscommunications on the Planning Commission process. There's no harm in giving the community another chance to put their applications in, to get a full spectrum of everything, with respect to the young man that's here who deploys, because he will be back, he said he'd be gone for two weeks, he'll be back in two weeks. That way, it saves, what I'm trying to avoid, what I'm trying to point out is, I don't want the extortion queen to come back and say, well, hey, look, you shut this down our throats again, and again, and again. But if we actually open it up and take our time, just a couple of weeks, we give the opportunity for more community members to come out, so you guys can have a full list of applicants, instead of just two lists of applicants. And again, it's just to save the extortion queen and her puppets, you know, the criticism of who you guys vote in. And not necessarily for you guys, but for the people that are stepping up to the plate, because it's hard to find volunteers for these positions, then they come and they get beat up over here. You know what I mean? They don't know what's going on. They're just getting beat up by the extortion queen and her puppet Lloyd White. But the thing is, this is, let them, open up the process a couple more weeks and solve all the quorums that there's gonna bring about in the future. That's all.
Thank you for your comments.
No more speakers.
No additional comments?
No additional.
So if I can give further instruction on this issue procedurally, you know, sometimes we hear the motion, I call the question, or it may be, I move the previous question, I move to limit debate, it's all the same effect. It's all the same motion, and that is to end debate, to cut off debate, and then to have a vote on the underlying motion. And that motion requires a supermajority. So I just wanted to make sure that you all understand how that works, because it has come up a few times in the past, and I want to make sure everybody's clear on how that works. In this case, we had the unique situation where members of the public hadn't weighed in, and they have a right to do that. So you have on the floor a motion to call the question, or cut off debate on the item, and then vote on the motion that was made. So if there's a second, then-
I'll second.
Okay, so you have a second to end debate and call the question, and it's a supermajority to pass that motion.
What's the supermajority?
It would be four votes.
Okay.
So let's take a vote on calling for the question by Roscoe, motion, and second by Fox. Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Protemlada?
Aye.
Mayor Knight?
Yes.
So that's passed.
So now you go to the original motion that was made and seconded.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the original motion. And can I give a, can I give a statement like Mr. Roscoe did when he made his second? Because I think this is important. Is that okay?
Amendment?
Yes, I would like to amend the motion to bring it back to not the next meeting, but the second meeting. Mr. Ririk did put his information in in time, and he's going to serve our country. He leaves for a short period, once a year, and I think that he has every right to be back here to speak.
Absolutely.
And I just hope that just because I know him, that you don't hold that against him, and that, you know, so my amendment is that we bring this back to a time that Mr. Ririk can be available.
Okay. And I apologize for weighing in so much on the procedural issues tonight, but when there's a motion to end debate and to call the question, and it passes, that ends debate, you immediately go to the underlying motion.
Okay.
So the motion on the floor was originally by Fox and seconded by Roscoe.
So I can't amend the motion?
Can I clarify?
A few exceptions where you cannot amend the motion, and you can't even debate it, actually.
Can I make a, ask clarification for the vote? Please, please. Can, after we make the vote, can we direct staff on when to post it? I mean, if we take the vote out for whatever the vote goes, we can still recommend to staff when to put that on the agenda.
The council can always give direction to staff, but it, you know, you really, you know, when you have a motion to end debate, and it passes, then you need to immediately call the vote and have the vote.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion was by Fox, originally seconded by Roscoe.
Can we hear what the motion was? Because I believe it said at the next meeting, I just want to clarify that that's what we're voting on.
Well, we have a date, I don't believe. I have direct staff to continue to advertise the vacancy until more applications are received.
Okay, I thought I had heard at the next meeting. No?
That's fine.
Do you have that? So we'll take a vote on that. Roll call, Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Protemlada?
Aye.
Mayor Knight?
Yes.
Can I, Protem, Mayor, can I make a suggestion on?
Yes.
Can we, Elizabeth, can we make sure that when we do that, we can make it flexible for the understanding of Mr. Ririk's situation?
The newspaper's deadline has passed for this Friday, so we'll have to wait until, sorry, the newspaper's deadline has passed for this Friday. We'll have to wait until next Friday, which I have no idea what the date that is. I think it's the Friday after Thanksgiving. Julie, are you gonna have a publication the day after Thanksgiving? Okay. We will give two weeks after that. That will put us the second week in December. That should line up with the Friday before the next count, the second meeting in December. So that's my timeline, if you want. I can wait until January, but December 15th would be the next council meeting. We would not be able to make December 1st and get applications.
Mr. Ririk, will you be here for December 15th?
I land that day, but I can make it here. But you shouldn't move your city around for me, though. I really want to be involved. I mean, it is what it is, but I do land on December 15th, but I'll do my best to be able to-
Can we have this, first speaker in January?
Absolutely.
January's good.
Let's do that and give Mr. Ririk time.
There will not be a seated commissioner on the December 10th Planning Commission meeting. I just want to reiterate that for everybody.
We'll still have a quorum, correct?
We'll still have a quorum as long as three people show up.
That'd be good. We've had to hear the council many times.
So we'll set it for the first meeting in January.
Good with January. I want to make sure we honor, give them that ability.
So Elizabeth, if you could go ahead and have the cutoff date within December?
Yeah, we can extend it out a couple more weeks if we're coming back in January.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming out, Mr. Ririk. We appreciate it. And then, you know, we just want to make sure we get it diverse, and we give everybody the opportunity to apply, come in.
Be safe.
Yes.
Okay, next item is 4B. I'd like to open it up for public comment.
4B, you do have one speaker.
Can I just-
I'm sorry.
Quick staffer.
Hold up. Sorry.
I'm not gonna read the whole thing. I just, there were a couple points that I wanted to make that came up after the staff report was written. I did have a conversation with utility partners. The Western States Engineering Flow Control Plates for the UV channels and the amount of $10,300 has been paid by utility partners, and I had asked for a copy of the canceled check, and it, there wasn't enough time to get it before tonight's meeting. Moreland Consulting, in the amount of $30,450, and Trojan Validation and Research Services, in the amount of $25,464, has not been paid. However, they did issue POs, from, utility partners issued POs to those two companies in the prior fiscal year, so it is on their books as a debt owed. They, I reached out to them and asked them if the city is inclined to pay them directly, is that an issue? And they said no, however, they would have to refile their taxes because it was earmarked in their prior book, before they closed their books for the last fiscal year. And then lastly, the Western States Engineering, in the amount of $7,000, the invoice has not been received, so that is a future debt that is included in this purchase order. And if I confused anybody, please let me know.
Thank you. I had some questions.
Mr. Roscoe?
Clarifying questions here. I know in the past, we've had spoken, council as well as staff, in discussion about putting this out, putting, you know, I was concerned, or questioning. I know that utility partners, we were supposed to go out to do an RFP on our service provider in terms of who's gonna work that facility.
The plant operator?
Mm-hmm, plant operator. Thank you for correcting me there. And I just want to know where we're at in that process, because they're still here, and we haven't discussed that item. I know we put that out there. Can you give us a timeline on that?
It'll be another at least 60 days. My goal is to get the Public Works Director to write that RFP. We do not have anybody on staff that can write that RFP right now.
Yeah, because we're still, we're still waiting. I know we went out to get an engineer or somebody with a background in water, correct?
Well, we're doing an RFP for a wastewater treatment plant engineer.
Engineer, that's right.
Correct. That RFP should be coming to council in December.
I'll go ahead and open up public comment.
Sure.
At, call it 9:30?
9:30, we have one speaker, Judy Bingham.
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. Throughout last summer and fall 2014, we listened to Kyle state publicly that the city of Beaumont would have a Title 22 compliant recycled water in 90 days, and again, in 60 days. The state deadline of December 30th to 2014 to produce Title 22 compliant water passed right under this council's nose. Last May, the city attempted to fake an open public bid to operate the sewer plant and replace utility partners. Once it was exposed, the public bid was a fraud, and the contract remained with utility partners without acknowledgement from either staff or council. In September, the city stated they had sent their Title 22 compliance testing, but the results have never been revealed. That's this September. The city met to discuss closing down the sewer plant because of its deteriorated condition. Now, Beaumont staff wants us to approve, wants to approve paying $73,000 to utility partners. Exhibit A, purchase order issued by the city to utility partners on November 4th, 2015. The authorized signers for the $73,000 expenditure are Acting City Manager Bertieaga and Worsinski, who started working in the planning department on November 1st. Exhibit B, a letter from utility partners dated October 22nd stating they received a job card. Now, as I remember, Betty Yee's report said that there was something wrong with using these job cards, and I see lots of them in here. And it was signed by Kapanikus and Worsinski on September the 11th, 2014, to start UV validation. Exhibit C, invoice for parts billed to the city but shipped to Highland, Utah, 640 miles from Beaumont. Invoice for parts billed to the city but shipped to Honolulu, Hawaii, 2,600 miles away from Beaumont. Maybe somebody can answer that question. Invoice for parts billed to the city but shipped to London, Ontario, 2,380 miles from Beaumont. Exhibit D, September 16th, item 6A, approval of $86,000 for Title 22 compliance in an attempt to make-
Ms. Bingham, thank you for your comments.
...the state water quality control boards December 30th deadline.
You're out of order. Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
No, no other speakers.
I'll go ahead and close public comment at 9:33.
We have a question.
For sure.
Or Elizabeth.
Elizabeth, can you respond, please, to the questions?
Elizabeth, could you report back on that? I know, I was understand, under the understanding that that deadline was, was it waived on Title 22, you know, when that deadline went through there?
That's actually a question for Kyle, but I do have, I do have the validation report that was sent to the state several weeks ago. We've been unable to get ahold of the gentleman that actually has the report at the state to find out what the status is. But this is in draft form, so I'm going to clarify with the city attorney after the meeting, find out if it is public record, because I don't know that it is.
And isn't utility partners, aren't they out of Hawaii? I know we had someone that's a specialist.
Moreland, that wrote the validation report, is from Hawaii.
Hawaii, that's, okay.
Yeah. And that's the 30,000 that you see on this. This is the tangible document for the 30,000, and then some other things that they do.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, to answer your specific question, the December deadline that originally was December 2014, was extended to December 2015 pursuant to the Basin Plan Amendment that was done in 2014. You could see that in the Basin Plan Amendment document, and then our NPDS permit that was approved earlier this year eliminated that requirement.
Okay.
So there is no December 31st, 2015 deadline to produce recycled water, and that's in our permit itself. So that answers that question. The discussion on sending items to Canada and Hawaii, I don't know where that's coming from. I do know that Moreland Consulting, his office and where he lives is in Hawaii. Nothing was sent there. In fact, his group came to the treatment plant for a week and performed the testing and prepared the document that has been sent to the state for review. Trojan Validation is the manufacturer of our UV system, so the ultraviolet disinfection system used on site, which is a key component in the treatment plant facility to pass Title 22 compliance, because that facility is what disinfects the water itself after it goes through the tertiary process. So they need to be on site for the entirety of the testing to make sure that the UV system is working and prepares the amount of dosage, which is how long the lights are on, and all that fun stuff. So both of those companies needed to work together to prepare, to perform the testing and prepare the report. Then Western States Engineering manufactured and sold us a flow control plate, which there's a picture of. It's just a big piece of metal with holes in it. And what that does is it limits or conditions the amount of flow, water going through the channels.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve the invoices.
I just want to make, ask a question before the motion is made. Is that possible?
Councilmember Roscoe, you have a question?
Just for Onyx. I know, we've been doing a great job in terms of giving a little more confidence to the council moving forward on the vote here. Has gone through the vetting process, determining, I mean, seen a product and seen the actual items that are placed here in front of us. You've associated them with the correct information?
That's not the responsibility of the finance director. Her responsibility is to ensure that the money's in the budget.
Okay.
It would be the department head that ensures that the product is received and at a fair value. Yeah.
Okay.
This all occurred before I got here as well.
This, just as a reminder, this item is a cleanup item. It's a housekeeping item.
Yeah, I understand.
We're catching up for invoices that need to be paid with our new purchase order process.
I'll go ahead, you done?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by White, second by Lada, to approve the PO. Roll call, Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Protemlada?
Aye.
Mayor Knight?
Yes.
Mark Stades will give the staff report on 4C.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. I won't read my whole staff report, but the California- Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery, otherwise known as CalRecycle, awarded the city of Beaumont a grant through their city-county payment program of the beverage container recycling program for fiscal year 1415. This is a grant that we have received, the city has received for several years. We use those grad funds to sponsor our annual cleanup, community cleanup event. This year's event was held in September, on September 12th. The Interact Club is the one that primarily helps us with that event. Bruce Merle, if you're familiar with him, he puts together all the service clubs and the kids that come out and help facilitate the residents getting rid of their waste. At this year's event, Waste Management removed 20 roll-offs of trash, green waste, collected 640 pounds of used tires, filled 11 four-foot-by-four-foot boxes of e-waste. Deseret Industries, which also participated, collected donations to fill a 12-foot-by-12-foot box truck. And iShred collected 5,550 pounds of documents for shredding. The grant award for 2014-15 was $11,013, and the monies were spent as follows. The cost, staff costs for the grant was $2,073. Advertisements were $1,692. Supplies were $197.92. Flyer printing was $200. Beaumont Interact, which is our contractor, is $5,000. Park rental fees are $115 for a total of $9,277.92. The remaining $1,735 will be allocated for staff to further the city's effort to increase recycling in business and residential areas. And we apologize to the Interact Club for this taking so long to get to council. Unfortunately, CalRecycle did change some of their requirements, reporting requirements. And so staff wanted to make sure we really looked into what those requirements would be before we spent the money. So that's why we're here tonight. If you have any questions?
Mayor Protem, I have a question.
Councilmember White?
I know that the Cub Scouts participated in this, but I don't see them as receiving any funds. So I'm trying to determine whether or not I need to recuse myself. I personally didn't participate, but my son is a Cub Scout in Beaumont. And I know that our pact did send some volunteers down. But I just want to verify, Cub Scouts aren't getting any money for this, correct?
No, the Cub Scouts and other service groups are brought out as volunteers.
Okay.
The Interact is the one that we contract with to receive.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Did I make a motion that we approve this?
Second. Do we have any speakers?
No public speaker.
Just wanted to comment real quick on this. This was a very, I thought it was a very successful event. Are we going to see this next year?
Yes, I hope so. We are trying to clarify with the state. They changed it to a two-year grant.
That's what I heard, yeah.
But my understanding is it's, the money has to be spent within two years, but yet you can reapply.
Okay, is that what it is?
That's what I think. So I'm going to clarify with them on that, but yeah.
I think, yeah. I mean, I know a lot of residents.
I'd like to call for the question, please.
Okay. So I know a lot of residents use that, so.
Sir, a second?
Just a second.
I think he was.
No, it's done anyways. Yeah, I just interrupted. So, but it's okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Right, original motion by White, second by Fox, to approve payment to Beaumont Interact in the amount of $5,000 from the CalRecycle grant. Roll call. Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lada?
Aye.
Mayor Knight?
Yes.
Next item up is 4D, or are you going to?
I'll need to recuse myself.
Since this matter affects my law firm, I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor and council, you have the law firm's professional service invoice for October in the amount of $66,385.37 before you.
I'd like to make a motion to, if we have those speakers, Protem, mayor, to approve the invoices.
Mr. Peaking, please.
No speaker.
Do you have a motion?
A second, yeah.
Do you have a second?
A motion by Roscoe, second by White, to approve.
Knight.
Knight.
Sorry, didn't I say Knight?
I'm Adam Mayor.
Adam Mayor Knight, thank you.
Knight.
To approve the invoices in the amount of $66,385.37. Roll call. Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lada?
Aye.
Honorable Mayor Knight?
Yes.
We'll get Mr. Peaking back in. Be smart, he'll go home.
Mayor and council, I'm going to just briefly review the items that we are planning to bring to you for December 1st. RFP for GIS services, CDBG applications, a final map, noise ordinance, update to Title 12 of the Beaumont Municipal Code Sidewalk Maintenance, an update from Urban Futures Incorporated on the CFD reconciliation. That will be a presentation. The recommendations on the 5th District volunteer that council asked to be brought back. An RFP for city vehicle maintenance, a draft of the workout plan to sustainability, a capital improvement plan budget draft, a response to council's questions to Wildermouth Environmental Incorporated. The second thing under City Manager Reports is City Manager Recruitment. I was appointed June 2nd, and I have had nothing but 100% support from city council. It's definitely been an education the last six months. I put this item on the agenda because I respectfully request that council start recruitment for a city manager. I do not intend to apply for that position. I have some personal goals that I would like to achieve and... Sorry. My family's ready, so. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Very much, Elizabeth.
Can I ask a question?
Councilmember Roscoe, you have a question?
No, I just would like to ask the Acting City Manager for, what do you recommend for us to go from here at this point?
I recommend that we do an RFP for a professional recruitment firm and go out to bid and have some firms come in and present their qualifications to, for advertising and what they see as the process for this particular recruitment. This is a very important recruitment for the city. We have not had a recruitment in 20 years, and I believe that it's imperative and it is responsible to have this done in the council chambers with the public as far as the RFP process.
Transparency.
Mayor Protem Lada, may I make a suggestion? I like that idea. I think it's good because it shows the transparency that we're trying to promote here. I'd also like to add to that and suggest that after we've selected the professional recruiting firm, that we bring them in for a, if you want to call it a workshop, a discussion with the community of what we're looking for, what, you know, what kind of city manager we're looking for moving forward. I know this is first time the city's done it in 20 years, and I think it's important that we find a way to do it the right way. So that's just my suggestion.
Do we have any other comments from any of your council members?
I have a comment. I want to thank Elizabeth in my very bad voice, but I know you worked around the clock. And I want to thank you, and I know you still will until we. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
You've been a huge asset for the city. Thank you very much.
I couldn't have done this without staff and my family, to be honest with you. I've answered a question, and you helped me answer that question, and it was, do I want to be a city manager? And the answer is no.
You want a life?
So do you need direction from us? Is that?
I would like a consensus on the RFP and a consensus on Councilmember White's suggestion. Once that RFP is awarded, we will, I'll need to work closely with that firm, and I'll need to include that in the RFP.
That we include, that they?
That we do a workshop of sorts, yes.
Okay. That'd be great. So they'll be, be part of the requirement for the headhunter or for the recruitment specialist to come in and, you know, that's going to be a part of the RFP in terms of that they have to do that, right?
Say that again? Sorry.
Let me clean it up. So that would be part of the requirement, what they would have to do?
It would be, yes. It would be part of their scope.
Scope, okay.
Because they'll have to include that in the cost.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we send it out to RFP and then make a condition of the RFP that the applicant, or the candidate who wins the award is then presented in a workshop with the public?
The normal process is to bring the RFP back to council. Is that what your motion is?
Yes. I'll second that motion.
Okay, so a motion by White, second by Roscoe. Are we okay with the motion? Roll call, Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lada?
Aye.
Mayor Knight?
Yes.
Council reorganization, I also added this to the agenda. Our current resolution number 2045 states that the rotation of the mayor and the office of Mayor Protem occurs in January. In my opinion, we are a month behind every other agency. One of the things that has happened in the past in January is the reorganization is done, and then the new mayor may or may not make committee appointments to the different JPAs, which then takes us into February and some of those meetings. We're a month behind other agencies. So my recommendation to council, and if you so choose to bring this back for an action item, is to change the resolution that we do the reorgs in December. We end the calendar year with a finale, and then January, we hit the ground running with the new, the new mayor and Mayor Protem if there's, you know, a new appointed.
I would like to make a motion to do that.
Do you have a recommendation on the first or the second meeting? I'm just thinking with the election, and usually that's when you're seating the brand-new councils, the first meeting.
I don't have a recommendation, but I, my recommendation is that it happens in December.
Okay. I will second and amend the motion that it be held at the second meeting in December.
So what we're going to do is bring the resolution back, the first meeting in December for you to adopt. And then, would it be effective, the second meeting in December? It should, right? The way we write, we write?
Yes.
Do we need, do we need a second on my amendment, or?
I'm sorry, I was reading something. Because of all the questions tonight, I'm going to, in the city attorney report, give an overview of some of the rules of procedure, just as a reminder. And I was looking down at that, so I apologize. So was, is there a motion on the floor?
There's a motion by the mayor.
I made a motion to move it to December, and Mr. White?
I seconded it and amended the motion to make it the second meeting in December.
And I.
If you'll agree to amend the motion, then you can vote on that motion.
Yes.
Thank you.
So the resolution will come back the second meeting in December, or the resolution will be effective the second meeting?
We, I'm just suggesting that we do the selection of the reorganization in that second meeting.
So the resolution would come the second meeting, and then they would immediately reorganize, or this resolution would come the first?
It'd be the same, right?
However you want to do it, a resolution becomes effective immediately upon adoption.
Whatever's easiest for you, is my opinion.
I'm good.
So we are cusing it for the second meeting then, or do we move it?
That's what the motion in the second is for, yeah.
So we have a motion by Knight, by Mayor Knight, second by White. Take roll call. Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lada?
Aye.
Mayor Knight?
Yes.
The other items under City Managers Report includes the updated building data that, I know we just had this in the last agenda, but we did get the October number, so I wanted you to have that. The Community Outlook is in every agenda because it has important dates on it. And then the last thing I'd like to do is address Mr. Halliwell's comments about the BCAT meeting.
Oh, yeah.
The BCAT meeting was held November 4th. Kyle?
Wednesday.
Yes. Kyle and I have been speaking about the continuing these meetings because there seems to be a decline in staff attendance, council attendance, and with the reorganization, with the layoffs in the budget and Kyle's new position in planning, we're looking at ways to maybe revisit those particular meetings. I was not aware, as Mr. Halliwell stated, that it was canceled completely. My understanding was is that it was talked about at the last meeting as, are we fulfilling the needs of the people that attend these meetings? And the attendance at the meetings has dwindled. I know it is, it is relative to, and important to certain people in the community that come religiously every month, and we do appreciate that. But I would like to revisit it and see if we can't gain a bigger audience than what we've been having. Because it is staff time. We have the chief there. I attend sometimes. Kyle goes every meeting. So we're just talking about revisiting it. We would certainly notice everybody if it was officially canceled.
May I?
Yes.
You know, we might want to change the date or the day, especially with staff coming off of city council meeting the night before.
That's.
It was a killer.
That's been another issue.
And there are other conflicting.
We have collaborative.
Yeah, collaborative agency meeting and that sort of thing.
Thursday seems to be a good day.
What I'll do is I'll bring a report back on December 1st on what we've talked about and kind of brainstorm some ideas and see what you guys think.
Maybe quarterly would be something we want to think about also. And maybe we can rotate as a council to attend those meetings. So make sure that at least one of, one of the council members is present, and we can rotate. Two at a time, one at a time, at least somebody there.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
That brings us to. Five, City Clerk report?
I have no report.
You sure?
I have, I have.
Yes, you do.
So we have a public comment on City Clerk report?
Yes, you do. So Judy Bingham?
I'll go ahead and open public comment at 9:55.
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. I've noticed you're not putting the request up on the transparency portal. You were doing that for a while, and that stopped. In fact, a lot of it stopped. So could you look at that and see why they're not getting put up? And next, there are several public records requests in serious default. It is not my problem that the city of Beaumont is corrupt. I don't care who stole them. I don't care if you have to pay someone to hunt them down. Get me my public records. Thank you.
I'd like to make a few comments if I could.
Sure.
Basically, the public, well, we have our staff issues, and we have worked to get the things we can fulfill. We've been working with the city attorney to get those responses that request more time to those individuals that need, you know, that have requests out that are outstanding. It is my intention to go through and compile exactly what we're doing. But as you know, we had a deputy clerk that is no longer with us, so we now have another impediment that we have to try to overcome. So we are trying, and I ask patience from the public for us to compile what we can. I do want to ask for clarification, though, from Ms. Bingham on the portal that you're referring to.
Transparency portal?
Yeah, but I don't understand what you're looking for.
Under your City Clerk part, go to that, public record request. All of them were up there.
Are you talking about the, okay, I know what you're saying.
My request would be up there, or any other request, request from reporters or whatever. It'd be up there. They're no longer.
They're no longer...
Well, that's...
You're no longer putting them up.
That's due to not having the staff.
That's correct.
Leo doesn't have access to the backside of Laserfish, so I'll have to assign somebody to do that.
And that's why. So I just want to let the council know. So I'll be planning to give you a more better report when I can get to it. So we need to get to staff.
Hopefully, we'll have a full-time deputy city clerk here by December. We are doing... We closed the application process. We are doing testing, and I hope to have a conditional offer to somebody in the next couple of weeks. We are actively recruiting all of these vacant positions.
Mr. Martinez, I appreciate your efforts in that regard. Do we have... Looks like we have another speaker?
For six, it just came in. Yes, we do. We still have it open. I'd like to call Victor Dominguez.
Good evening. Only a couple of concerns I have with the speaking abilities. I do notice that people have to walk up now through here and hand it in to the deputy, which gives it to the city clerk. That's a good program, but when we have a full house like we had today, it's very hard to make your way through here because it kind of bottlenecks. And the chief is always constantly trying to keep the pathway clean and clear. So we got like a bottleneck, and people trying to get their tickets in, but we also have a lot of people, and we also have a fire hazard to try to keep clear. Only suggestion is if we can think of something to where the slip gets to the clerk in a more fashionable way, because when we had all these people here right now, a lot of them were intimidated to come and walk up in front of everybody when the council's in motion, because it's kind of disturbing when you guys are talking in this area, and you guys come up here, because everybody's like, eyes are on the person handing it in, and it kind of disrupts the meeting a little bit. So that's just a suggestion. Second thing is, we all know that information is crucial. I mean, it's a right, especially when you start spending tax dollars, and public needs to know how you're spending them. So that's always an important issue, and I'm glad that this particular council is very mindful of that, and with their clerk, who's doing an awesome job, in my opinion, making that information available to the public. But there's also another category that this council and the clerk needs to take a look at, and that's the public information requests regarding the police department. I have done some reading on the new laws and what's privileged and what's redacted when it comes to the police department. But in this particular case, you know, we have a history with the police department that's cost us millions and millions of dollars in lawsuits. Obviously, there is a problem in the past under Chief Coe, to where the public needs to have more information accessible to them regarding our police department. And I think if the council can just take time, along with the city clerk, to research what the chief can deem releasable versus non-releasable for the interest of the public, so that way we can hold our police department a little bit more accountable, instead of us cashing the checks in the tune of millions and millions of dollars and set of lawsuits over the past three, four years and back. And again, just want to make sure that we take a look at that, and it's a part of the discussion. The public needs to be aware of how the policies and procedures are with the police department when it comes to public information requests. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
One last comment that I should have stated before. Any member of the public is welcome to come into City Hall and sit down at a computer and view any of the records that we have. Part of our bottleneck is not just lack of staff, but it's also redaction. We have mounds of redaction that we have to do before we can put it on the transparency portal, and I know that we have offered to some members of the public that have submitted public records requests that they are more than welcome to come in and look at bank statements and things like that that haven't been redacted yet.
Can I?
Yeah.
Have a question. Elizabeth, there are the people watching, they must... Some people might not understand what it means to redact something.
I'll give you an example. The Union Bank statements, there are account numbers on the Union Bank statements. Most banks will X out all but the last four numbers of the account numbers. Union Bank refuses to do that. And so staff has to print out 800-plus pages, blackout all but the last four digits of the account number, and then re-scan that particular document. We get a request for the Union Bank statements every month, so this is an every-month process of 800 pages, and we use every employee that we can in every department that has a few minutes of free time to do that redaction. But it is time-consuming, and that's only one example. So the redaction is blacking out confidential information such as bank account numbers.
Thank you. Mr. Peatton, you have a question or comment? I'm going to go ahead and close public comment at 10:04. City Attorney Reports?
Yes, I had some... Sorry, I had some additional items that I wanted to briefly go over since I've been asked to make some modifications to the rules of procedure for the council. And so we did some research and found some cases that gave guidance on addressing rules of procedure that address defamatory or profane comments that impede the progress of the meeting. So I'm going to come to you with a draft ordinance, and I have no idea what kind of input that you're going to give me. You may like it, you may feel that it has a chilling effect on public input, but I'll come to you at a future meeting and get your feedback one way or the other, and it may be that you take what I present to you and want to tailor it down. So I just wanted you to be aware in terms of reporting on some of the things that we're doing, and that's one of the items that we're going to do. And then also, I wanted to remind you of some of the rules of procedure that apply to these proceedings. And I think for a period of time, I'm going to go over during the city attorney report some of the rules of procedure, just so that you're aware of them going into the meetings. First, the city council has adopted the Rosenberg Rules of Procedure as modified by your ordinance. And Rosenberg provides that the rules of order are meant to create an atmosphere where the members of the body and members of the public can attend to business efficiently, fairly, and with full participation. At the same time, it's up to the chair and members of the body to maintain common courtesy and decorum. Unless the setting is very informal, it is always best for only one person at a time to have the floor, and it is always best for every speaker to be first recognized by the chair before proceeding to speak. The chair should always ensure that debate and discussion of an agenda item focuses on the item and the policy in question, not on the personalities of the members of the body. Debate on policy is healthy, debate on personalities is not. The chair has the right to cut off discussion that is too personal, too loud, or too crude. I would add to that, that impairs the progress of the meeting. Debate and discussion should be focused but free and open. I also want to point out on motions, I wanted to discuss motions briefly, that during debate and discussion of a motion, the maker of the motion on the floor at any time may interrupt a speaker to withdraw his or her motion from the floor. And sometimes that can save us from procedural wranglings over issues. If somebody makes a motion to amend a motion that's on the floor, the maker of the motion can withdraw his or her motion. The motion is immediately deemed withdrawn, although the chair may ask the person who seconded the motion if they wish to make the motion. Also, as to the type of motions, there's the basic motion. The basic motion is the one that puts forward a decision for consideration. A basic motion might be, for example, quote, "I move that we create a five-member committee to plan and put on our annual fundraiser." A motion to amend. If a member wants to change a basic motion that is under discussion, he or she would move to amend it. A motion to amend might be, "I move that we amend the motion to have a 10-member committee." A motion to amend takes the basic motion that's before the body and seeks to change it in some way. A substitute motion. If a member wants to completely do away with the basic motion under discussion and put a motion before the governing body, he or she would move a substitute motion. A substitute motion might be, "I move a substitute motion that we cancel the annual fundraiser this year altogether." A motion to amend seeks to retain the basic motion on the floor but to modify it in some way. A substitute motion seeks to throw out the basic motion on the floor and substitute it with a new and different motion. There may be up to three motions on the floor simultaneously. The chair may reject a fourth motion until the first three are voted on and have been resolved. I wouldn't recommend having three motions on the floor at the same time. It becomes very confusing, because if I'm on the council and I make a motion, and then somebody seconds it, what gets confusing is we actually... If we have a motion to amend, we vote on the motion to amend first, and if the motion to amend is granted, then we go back and we vote on the underlying amended motion, just so you all understand. So I'm trying to give you some of these rules so that it might be more efficient when we come across these issues during the meetings. Also, under the rules that you adopted, the mayor or presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak without first being recognized by the mayor or presiding officer, which this council's very good about. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the mayor or presiding officer. No city council member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any subject until every other city council member wishing to speak thereon shall have had the opportunity to speak. And then the time limitation is 10 minutes for staff report, 30 minutes for council debate. Somebody can make a motion to extend those times if they desire to do so. Okay, so that is my overview of that, and I'll continue to give those overviews in the coming council meetings. And then the other item that I wanted to report on briefly, reporting on some of our activities, is I wanted to raise the subject that the current city code places a total ban on marijuana and marijuana-related activities within the city. Specifically, the code prohibits cultivation, as well as the operation of medical marijuana dispensaries, mobile dispensaries, and delivery. On October 9, 2015, Governor Brown signed into law three bills, Assembly Bill 266, Assembly Bill 243, and Senate Bill 643, collectively called the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, establishing a statewide regulatory scheme for the licensing, cultivation, processing, transportation, testing, and distribution of medical cannabis. There are two areas that require immediate attention from local governments under the act. One is deliveries and mobile dispensaries. Two, cultivation or prohibiting cultivation, and the deadline to do that is March 1, 2016. In our case, the Beaumont ordinance, the current ordinance specifically bans both deliveries and mobile dispensaries and cultivation within the city. But we're going to come to you, and we're going to raise this issue with you to get input from you on what, if anything, you want to do with your existing ordinance, only because of the upcoming deadline in the first quarter of next year under this new legislation. So with that, that is my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. We have item number eight, consent calendar. Move to approve.
I have two misspellings on the minutes. I don't know, can we approve with just a minor?
You can approve the minutes with the modifications.
Oh, so. Just want to let you know, we have a couple of misspelling on names for public speakers.
And I'll go through and clean that.
Yeah, so, okay. All right, so yes, I knocked it out a little bit. So we have a motion by Fox, and a second by...
Roscoe.
Thank you. Okay, to approve the consent calendar. Roll call. Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Protemlada?
Aye.
Mayor Knight?
Yes.
So we now have a closed session item that was not addressed in the closed session at the beginning of the meeting, and that is item B, Conference with Legal Counsel and Discussion Regarding Resolution of Worker's Compensation Claims pursuant to Government Code Section 5495, 6.95. Geelen versus City of Beaumont, case number ADJ 7288405, agency claim against City of Beaumont. And if there's members of the public that want to comment on that closed session item before we go into closed session, they're entitled to do so, and then the public is also entitled to remain here until we report back. And I want to point out that when we go into closed session at the end of the meeting, we do come back into the council chambers and report out from closed session, so...
Request to speak?
No request to speak.
Adjourned, yes. Adjourned to closed session.
Meeting will be adjourned to closed session.